I call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of October 22, 2025 to order. If you can stand, I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I acknowledge that the land we gather, live, and work on today, currently known as the city of Palm Springs, is the original homeland of the Awa Kaliente Band of Keweeah Indians. The sovereign band of Awa Kaliente people have stewarded this land throughout the generations and continue to steward this land for all future generations. We honor and respect the many diverse indigenous people still connected to this land. City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Okay, first up is a presentation by Village Board, yes?
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to update you on the great work being done by the Village Fest Board and our staff. Our work is driven by our purpose and vision, which is called out in the screen for you to see. I am Greg Roberts. I am the Chair of the Village Fest Board. I am here with members of our board and Mr. Nicholas Gonzalez, who is the Director of Parks and Recreation. Nick will speak about our priority, the work being done today, the tactical work on the day-to-day operation of Village Fest. I will come back and conclude the presentation with an outline of our strategic or longer-term view. So I'll turn it over to Nick.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This summer, we engaged with Trepepi Smith, who is a marketing and public affairs firm, to help us modernize and re-energize the Village Fest brand. The goal of this was to celebrate the legacy of Village Fest, but also position this weekly event for continued long-term success. Out of this process, we now have a comprehensive marketing plan that focuses on revitalizing branding, boosting attendance, retaining and attracting vendors, and telling a stronger story about this signature Palm Springs event. Our approach will be centered on communicating to five different audiences, focusing on our locals, our tourists, vendors, performers, and community partners. Each of these audiences play a vital role in making Village Fest a success every week. So pictured here, here's how we will be bringing that strategy to life. First, we'll be taking look, closer look at our website, where we need to do some cleanup and ensure we meet ADA compliance. In the future, we will need to look at upgrading the website with goals of showcasing interactive maps of all of our Village Fest vendors along the footprint and more vendor information and spotlights. We are also launching a new social media strategy to showcase all that Village Fest has to offer, and we'll be creating some clear social media guidelines. On social media, we are also going to be featuring vendor stories and spotlights on our partners and attendees. We will also be implementing a new tagline concept such as PS, "Meet Me at Village Fest", and PS, "See You at Village Fest." Also, we will be implementing a new email marketing to connect directly with our vendors and attendees, so we can keep them informed of upcoming themes and opportunities. Lastly, we are expanding our creative collateral with a focus on brochures, print ads, posters, and some branded promo items to help build recognition and consistency with our brand. All of this will ensure Village Fest is not only well-represented in the city, but also across Coachella Valley and beyond. Another item that we will be implementing are seasonal campaigns. Each campaign connects with what is happening in town, both locally and regionally. In the fall, our theme is Falling Into Autumn, which celebrates community pride, builds partnerships with our schools, and other celebrations that are happening in town. In winter, we are celebrating Holiday Market Magic in conjunction with Palm Springs Holidays to promote local shopping and other festive holiday celebrations. Spring will be Desert in Bloom, which aligns with large regional events to drive pre-festival foot traffic into Village Fest. And lastly, in summer, Hot Nights, Cool Fines will embrace our desert nights with family fun activities. All these campaigns will keep Village Fest relevant, visible, and exciting throughout the year. And to measure this success, we have identified clear metrics to measure progress as we implement this marketing plan over the next year, with a focus on attendance growth, vendor retention, social media engagement, website traffic, and other media coverage. We will also be distributing an attendee survey starting November 6 at Village Fest to gather insight and feedback from our attendees about what they would like to see and what they would like to see improved along the Village Fest footprint. Following that survey, we will look at surveying other key stakeholders, including the downtown merchants. Our team will track these indicators and report back to the Village Fest Board, ensuring this plan delivers a return on our investment. Ultimately, success will be measured not just in numbers, but in how residents and visitors feel, connected to Palm Springs through Village Fest. And I'll pass this over to Greg to conclude us out.
Our strategic view of Village Fest is that in addition to a weekly event, it is also an asset with unrealized fiscal benefits for the city. We believe this because of the longevity. It's been going strong for 30 years, continued attendance of thousands of people downtown every Thursday night. Our vendor survey told us that our vendors are happy participating and will continue to do so because their businesses are profitable. During our board jury process of vendors, we are often told that of all the similar venues in this area, Village Fest is the one to be aligned with. But our ultimate success factor is those vendors that have achieved business growth and success and have expanded to brick-and-mortar operations. We see Village Fest as being an incubator to help small businesses and entrepreneurs grow, but why should this be limited only to Thursday nights, and why is it important? Our vision is to create a Village Fest best of Village Fest storefront that will give our vendors a platform to sell their products, not on other nights other than Thursday. Our best vendors will be rotated, creating an opportunity in keeping the product fresh and of interest to shoppers while capitalizing on the Village Fest brand. Our goal is recognition of our vendors, which was one of the things that our vendors told us in the survey, to potentially create business base by supporting, incubating, if you will, entrepreneurial small businesses, to create a laboratory by helping entrepreneurs model if their business is scalable and potentially launchable into a standalone business, to create ROI through taxes and fees to participate in the storefront, and lastly, employment opportunities. Ancillary to the best of Village Fest opportunity, I've reached out to College of the Desert Senior Administrator to discuss the possibility of collaborating, considering its Palm Springs campus curriculum focusing on hospitality and creative arts and design. They have a high degree of interest in further discussion to bolster small business development while creating learning opportunities for students. This collaboration can create and fuel the incubator to create organic business growth, academic advancements for students with an entrepreneurial focus. The outcome of stated is business development, revenue generation, and potential job growths. So you see, not only is Village Fest a great event, it is also an asset. Of course, this will require some support from the city to test this concept. Additionally, our strategic goal is to enhance board governance. In light of possible collaboration with the College of the Desert, we need new eyes and visions on the board, so we will pursue a student seat. Lastly, collaboration is crucial with the various organizations that drive tourism and support the stakeholders that have made Village Fest successful. Our call to action, Village Fest is a microcosm of what is great about Palm Springs. Village Fest is worthy of support, both tactically and strategically. And while our strategic view is somewhat of a shift in paradigm, we believe the possibilities and potential payback is worth the effort, and our ask to you is an endorsement to begin to develop a more concrete plan. There's more to come. We ask for your continued interest and support in Village Fest and helping it can be all that it can be. PS, we'll see you at Village Fest. Thank you.
Well, excellent, very good, thank you. And thank you to all the board members from Village Fest that came out and support. We appreciate that and appreciate the work that you all do all year round. Gregory, how long have you been Chair?
I am in my second term, and I've been Chair for three years.
For three years, so you have another year?
I have another year.
And then you have to be...
And I will time out.
There, you're timed out, okay. Well, thank you. You got a lot of work to do in the next year.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a couple of comments?
Yeah, please.
So first of all, I want to thank you for this. I, my business was incubated at Village Fest for two years, so it is a, I love the idea of you doing the incubator, and it definitely helped. I love the social media and focusing on individual vendors, which I think is great for those of us who don't always know what's new. And I want to really stress, you mentioned it, the business survey, the downtown businesses, and also the businesses that are in the adjacent areas who are sometimes affected. You showed that image of the plaza, and they still have the barricades in front of them. I also love that you're doing the holidays, and I'm so appreciative that you're focusing on that. It is hot nights in the summer and cool fines. We tend to sort of whitewash the fact that we're really hot, but thank you for doing that. We've had a number of comments recently I've seen on social media about changing the layout to having it down the center, having the booths facing towards the stores. I don't know if you want to address any of that, but it sort of keeps making the rounds as to why. Don't do something.
Sure, sure. Regarding moving the vendors to the center along Palm Canyon, we can't do that currently due to the infrastructure downtown. We are pulling light, electricity from all the light poles there for all the vendors. It is a night market, so if we'd moved everybody in the center, then you're pulling cords and having that all along the footprint, which then becomes a tripping hazard unless we had, you know, covers all along the way, which would be very costly for this event. And so the infrastructure, as it currently stands, does not allow us to move that into the center aisle.
The other, the other one that's been making the rounds is facing the booths towards the stores, so you're not facing away from the stores and then having two lanes. I don't know if you've looked at that at all.
We haven't really explored that option as, as much. We would need to make sure that we have public safety clearance to allow for vehicles to easily come through if needed for an emergency. We can explore that also, but we also want to make sure that it is easy to get into the footprint, and with sidewalks and tripping hazards, we want to be mindful of that. So something that we can look into, but can't guarantee that's something we can change.
But this is great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
All right, thank you. We had a handful of proclamations these last few weeks. The Blue Zones Project Day was recognized. Herbert W. Burns was honored with the 480th Star on the Palm Springs Walk of Stars. The Pride Monument was dedicated to the city and celebrated Jim Iserman's civil rights sculpture in Francis Stevens Park. And we are very excited that we are serving as the host city for the 2025 IGTLA Global Convention, which is occurring at the convention center this week. It's an international event, and they're having record-breaking attendance, I just heard, and folks from 30-plus countries, can I say that and be safe? All right, 30-plus countries are, are here in town, and it's an important crowd that's going to send a positive message about Palm Springs around the world. So we're very excited to have them here. You'll see them out and about downtown and at the convention center. Say hi if you see folks wearing their convention badges. Next up, we've got the acceptance of the agenda. City Council will discuss. The order of the agenda may amend. The order at urgency items, no abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. Are there any items staff or a council member would like to be removed from the consent calendar? Councilmember Bernstein?
I'd like to pull 1M for discussion, and I have comment, just comments on 1E and 1F.
Is that it for tonight? Wow, oh, Mayor Pro Tem? Okay. Mayor ready? Are councilmember ready? Last, last chance? All right, then we will, and I'm recusing from M, so I'd like to entertain a motion for the acceptance of the agenda. Do we have a second? Councilmember Bernstein, seconded by... Councilmember ready? And the motion carries 5O. At this time, I invite our city attorney to give us a report on closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The City Council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda, including the one item that was added earlier as a late-breaking item, and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Next item is public testimony. Time's been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes are assigned, and first up is Jasmine Sullivan Waits. And public hearing testimony will be taken at the time of the public hearing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. Thank you for having me. I'm going to put my head down and read this very fast, because two minutes is not nearly as long as I thought it was. I'm here to speak on Item 1B. On behalf of the Greater Palm Springs Pride Board of Directors and the Dedicated Planning Committee, I would like to express our gratitude for updating the current contract to reflect the significant contributions that the city makes to help produce Palm Springs Pride. Twelve years ago, Palm Springs Pride held its annual festival inside the baseball stadium. Pride charged attendees $10 totaling $80,000 in revenue to organizers. After three young, long years of advocating, planning, and soliciting support from our community stakeholders, the Palm Springs Pride Board of Directors moved the festival into downtown Palm Springs and made the event free for all. The city fees for producing the event in downtown Palm Springs grew to nearly $100,000 in its first year. The Pride organization took a significant risk in creating a free Pride for all, but the goal was to mirror Palm Springs city values, creating welcoming, safe, and inclusive spaces for all. For a small comparison, San Diego Pride grosses $2.5 million in ticket sales alone. If Palm Springs Pride charged just half of the estimated attendance, we would gross nearly $1 million in revenue, but the event would no longer be welcoming to all. Most people have no idea what city staff does to help produce an event of this magnitude, but I do. Some of the examples of the in-kind services that the city produces, the Special Event Sergeant works on a detailed safety plan for months leading up to event. This person watches the dark web for potential threats and risks and adjusts that safety plan accordingly. The events, the emergency manager for the city works with city staff to help provide the promoter with a detailed emergency action plan. The streets manager creates a certified traffic plan for each and every street closure. Police and fire in the events division host a pre-parade safety meeting.
Jasmine, you're on a roll, but we ran out of time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Shannon Metcalf, please. And then followed by Mike Panessa.
Thank you, Councilmembers, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. I'm Shannon Metcalf, and I'm speaking on Item 3A. I am... I am a member of the Vron Board, owner of a home in District 4, and I have a boutique vacation rental business here in Palm Springs. Thank you to city staff for their continuous engagement with vacation rental owners and operators. It enables everyone to succeed in bringing tourists to Palm Springs and keeping our neighborhoods happy. In my capacity as a Vron Board member, I am personally on a weekly call with the Department of Special Programs, compliance, to go over the number of calls, texts, and emails to the hotline, and the number of citations issued for the weeks prior. We have noted a continual decline in both calls to the hotline and citations issued since 2018. We thank the Office of Special Programs and the council for examining and refining a few of the most cumbersome rules that bring little value to ensuring that we are respectful to our neighbors. We hope the city will be willing to engage more frequently with owners and operators when the need for updates to the ordinance become apparent. We thank you for considering maintaining the number of contracts currently in place at 36 for all permit holders and believe a cut to 26 will result in the obvious fewer tourists, fewer people eating in our restaurants, and shopping in our stores, and less TOT revenue. Thank you so much.
Mike Panessa, followed by Brian Yacklick.
Thank you to the mayor, city council, city manager, and the city staff for their time and effort on this issue of short-term rentals before the city council this evening. My name is Mike Panessa. I'm a full-time resident of Palm Springs, a homeowner in the Deepwell neighborhood, former chair of the city's Administrative Appeals Board, and current member of the city's Historic Site Preservation Board. I'm also on the board of Vron and the Palm Springs Hospitality Association. I'm speaking to you tonight on Agenda Item 3A as a resident and a owner of a permitted short-term rental in Palm Springs. I have been supporting the short-term rental regulatory framework the city established since 2017. We have several short-term rentals adjacent to our home and have never had an issue with any of them. The current rules surrounding short-term rentals are working and do not need to be made more restrictive. Being a full-time resident here, my husband and I love living in a vibrant and alive city. We enjoy saying hello to people each morning when we walk our dog. We appreciate seeing people in our neighborhood, even if those people are only here for a short time. We're proud of the many diverse restaurants and shops the tourism industry supports. The majority of residents have voiced their support for well-managed short-term rentals in their neighborhoods. In such uncertain times, this is no time for, to put unnecessary restrictions on the city's economy, and we all benefit from the tourists and the dollars they pump into the city's economy. Because of this, we urge you to keep the current number of rental contracts at 36 for all permit holders and not reduce it to 26 starting next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Behind Brian, we have Ron Willison.
Thank you, city council, for reviewing the, this, this event. In, in November two years ago, the city passed the ordinance with a 20% cap. In that cap, you also included apartment buildings and HOAs that do not allow short-term vacation rentals to be on-site. There are 6,000, 6,000, someone's got a phone buzzing. There are over 6,000 units, apartment units, that are included in the total cap numbers, and thousands of HOAs that have outlawed or do not allow short-term vacation rentals in their facilities. So what has happened? The pressure is falling on to the local neighborhoods. 25% of short-term vacation rentals are in single-family homes. What it means is the pressure is felt directly on our communities. I live in warm sands. Regularly, we have challenging times with sound, trash, and rude behavior. One of the most noted points is that we regularly have homeowners returning to the valley from LA, San Francisco. They turn their radios, they turn on their sound systems in the backyard. The calls are placed, and the city, city compliance officers come out and say, "Well, it's probably one of the, probably one of the owners of the unit." So constantly, the compliance officers are placed in an awkward position. The, everyone becomes a bad guy because there's suddenly sound coming out of a place that should never, ever have sound coming out. What I'm asking the city council is to eliminate short-term vacation rental counts in the 20% cap. We cannot continue to count 6,000 apartment units. We cannot continue to count thousands of HOAs that do not allow short-term vacation rentals on their properties. I feel that there should be a freeze because 25% of our homes where our leaders come from frequently are just sitting empty 80% of the time. It's a disaster.
Sorry, my mic was off. Thank you, Brian. Behind Ron, we've got Joe, Joan Martin.
Good evening, mayor and councilpeople. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm actually addressing an ordinance in that 3A clause W, which is the inclusion of event permits into that allotted contract count. And I'd like to begin with a simple question. What problem are we actually solving by including permanent events in the city's vacation rental count? Because where many of us stay in residence, venue owners, business operators, and nonprofit partners, this change doesn't solve a problem, it creates one. Under the current clause, permanent events in vacation rental count against that contract cap. That means hosting a fully permitted city-regulated charity fundraiser or a corporate retreat in June carries the same penalty as a weekend retreat. And let's be clear, these events are not rentals. They follow a separate, rigorous permit process. They end by 10:00 p.m. Neighbors and neighbors are notified, staff are on-site, insurance, parking plants, and safety procedures are all in place. These are not party houses. They're compliant, permitted, and economically vital to the city. Yet here we are with zero clarification on how a three-day stay plus a one event is counted. Is that one contract or two? Does a nonprofit host a one-night fundraiser in a state venue, does that count against an owner's total contract for the year? If so, what messages are we sending to the dozens of community organizations who rely on these venues for fundraising? And perhaps most frustrating, why has no one from the city reached out to Event Community for over the past two years when this was inaugurated? We found out about clause W at the same time as everyone else. And Palm Springs has built its brand around these kind of cultural events, weddings, nonprofit galas, and destination gatherings. These activities bring jobs, TOT, and global visibility to our city. We already follow the rules. We're not asking for anything deregulation. It's clarity and fairness. Let's fix this clause because honestly, before this was added by a councilperson on that Thursday night and voted the next week, it was never recommended by any city department, including vacation rental compliance planning or anyone else. This was suggested by one councilperson, voted on the next, and there's never been any outrage to any type of event person in this valley. And you're talking about a $5 to $10 million a year business that you're directly impacting just because there was no ROI or anything.
All right, Ron, your time's up. Thank you.
That was perfect. Thank you.
Behind Joan is Estelle Lewis.
This is a lament about housing. People who use short-term rentals for income, who operate businesses in residential areas, are taking away housing that we could use for people to come here, to rent, to buy. And it raises the price of everything because there is not enough housing to go around. It's an inappropriate, inappropriate combination, you can see. And it redounds to, we have people who work here who have to live in other cities. They can't afford it here. We have people who would like to live here. There's no way they could afford whatever there is, and there's not enough. So this is a very particular piece of the pie, and it annoys me a great deal. Thus, it is a lament. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And following Estelle Lewis is Dieter Crawford.
This is not my first time attending a council meeting. I should have paid more attention because I wasn't sure what, how you would be handling the information that's to be out here tonight. I basically wanted to speak regarding the Homeowners Assistance Program, first phase, but I don't know if I need to do that now, or may I wait until you come to that item on the agenda?
Yeah, no, you can speak to it now.
Will there be a presentation? Because if there's no presentation, I don't know what I can...
There'll be a staff report.
I'm sorry?
There'll be a staff report.
So then I'm, I'm, I'm going to wait for the presentation now.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So you want to make your comment now, if you want to make a comment? But the staff report will be presented later on in the meeting.
I have a comment, but I need to know. You may even give the information, and I don't need to comment or ask the question, but I would like to hear what you have to offer, and then I can come and make the comment.
Is there anything preventing her from making the comment at the end of the meeting? Non-agenda item?
Can I just, so there, there isn't, the mayor, you have the authority to change the way that we do the meeting on this, but I do want to let the public know that this item is the second-to-last item on our agenda, and it might be very late before we get to it. So I just want to keep that in mind. If anyone wants to wait until that item, it might be very late in the evening. So you just want to, to think about that.
Okay. I mean, if you want me to make the comments, I will. And it seems like this happens at a lot of places where I go. The items that are the largest or the ones that maybe people would really like to speak and offer information on is placed where it's way at the end of the agenda. But, but... So if you don't want me to speak, that, that's okay. I just needed to know.
I've invited you to make your comments.
Okay. My comments were questions.
Questions?
So the first question is, this Homeowners Assistance Program, first phase, does that have anything to do with people who are other than just regular residents here in the city? Is that just for people who live in the city that can get those loans?
We can't answer the questions, but we can hear your questions right now.
Okay. See? I figured that. But anyway, the other one was, the first thing I wanted to say is because I've been following, and I am, a survivor of Section 14, so I know what's going on a little bit with that. But I would also like to know, another question. Are any of the families going to be included in this Homeowners Assistance Program? Or is that separate question? I know you're not going to answer it right now. So as information was going to be developed, is that going to be shared with the people who are either going to be selected and/or selected to receive Homeowners Assistance on the loans? That's, that was my other question, but I don't even know what it contains, so I'm done.
Can you ask the last question again? I didn't quite understand it.
The people who will be applying for those loans and may be selected, will they be kept up to date on what's going on with the process?
Okay. Thank you. I got it now.
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Dieter Crawford. I'm a resident of the Desert Highland Gateway Estates neighborhood, also a member of the Section 14 Survivors and Descendants Group. Here tonight to speak on the Homebuyers Assistance Program. I think the program will be really beneficial to residents that are interested in, in purchasing homes here in Palm Springs. We know how high home prices have become and how unattainable homeownership is. So I think that this program will be a great benefit with helping people achieve their dream of homeownership as well as creating generational wealth. I did have a chance to look at the staff report. In the future, we would ask that you get those out earlier so people like the lady that just came up can have a chance to look at that. I know there's a 72-hour window, but at least if you can warn us that it's going to be on the agenda, that would be helpful. I saw that 50, the down payment assistance can go to 50% of the purchase, up to $200,000. I think that that's great. But I would like to see the 20% that's allocated to Section 14 survivors be increased to at least like 30 or 40%. The county's going to be administering the program. It's going to be $1 million a year. They're going to get 10%. That's going to leave $900,000. 20% of $900,000 is $180,000. So that's basically one home for Section 14 Survivors and Descendants that will get assistance. The cheapest single-family home in Palm Springs is $400,000 to $500,000. So I would ask that we increase that percentage for Section 14 Survivors and Descendants and maybe even take it a little bit further to increase the funding for the program. I know we agreed to 10 million, and the budget for the year has already been set, but in the future, for first-time Homebuyers Assistance, maybe let's look at adding more financing to that program so it can go a little further. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. David Feltman.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I'm David Feltman, a resident, a voter, and taxpayer in Palm Springs. I'm speaking tonight to encourage the council to extend the 36 contracts for short-term rentals. We have a regulatory framework in Palm Springs that works extremely well, and there's substantial support in the community for it. You have recently received a voter study from the Visit Greater Palm Springs that bears this out. Please support a clean extension of 36 contracts for all permit holders. I'd also like to express my support for an important part of the tourism ecosystem in Palm Springs, our events providers and venues. This is something that I've been contemplating for, you know, a long time, not as long as Ron, clearly. We have an antiquated permit rule requiring 60 days to get an event permit, as if they are all large-scale events. This needs to be fixed ASAP. Here's one example. We have members of the city council and staff and others who are trying to promote Christmas here and all of the opportunities around that. Yet our 60-day permit policy essentially says to corporate and other sponsors, "Take your Christmas event down valley because we need 60 days to permit it." And people don't plan their Christmas events, you know, so they can do this 60, 90, 120 days out. Let's start paying more attention to making it easier to do business here. I bet we won't be sorry when more events are held pre-Christmas and more tourists and locals, locals, other people from other places in the valley who come to have an event here choose to spend the night or weekend in Palm Springs because we enable more events to happen here. Thank you. Oh, good. Last time I got the hook, this time I'm...
Mickey Brown, followed by Kimberly Essing.
Good afternoon, once again. I am a native here in Palm Springs. I'm fighting for, I'm a survivor, and I'm fighting for my descendant relatives that has passed away. My older sibling, Sammy Brown, has passed away. Him and Gertrude Brown, they were there before me. They're up in their 80s, 83. And my older sister put this in my lap to make sure that our father, Nemi Brown, that brought a lot of people from the South here and other people, family members, that's not being identified as Section 8 descendants and survivors. So what I'm saying now, you're saying this here, housing that you're giving Section 14 of our money that is going to be allocated through your city to be able to distribute these funds, are you going to have things in place who, the peoples of the descendants and, of the survivors of the descendants that's going to be able to qualify? Is it going to be any type of bylaws with credit? Or how is this money's going to be given out to these people? Because you have programs already where the North end of Palm Springs doesn't even have access to, to be able to get into your low-income homes. And I just, is this going to be a conflict of interest? You're already getting funds from the state for housing, and I'm just... You're already getting funds from the state for housing, and I'm just really doing my paper trail, you know? I sit in the down-low and just kind of do my homework. It's really puzzling me, because it's sending mixed signals. It's like you're saying you're really giving us something, and at the same time, you're still controlling us with the funds of 20-something million dollars that, you know, you said is for housing. I mean, and they're giving us 5.9 million, you know, for the survivors. I mean, this is kind of ludicrous to me, but, you know, it's all going to play out. I just want to know, do you have a phased plan? When the time is going to start with this, breaking grounds? What is the timeframe? When is this actually going to manifest? You know, I'm really, my spirit is not good with this, you know? I don't care if I don't get a dime.
I appreciate your comments.
I'm just letting you know I'm watching you guys, because you're something else.
Kimberly, and then followed by Lisa Bernard. Kimberly Essie. Lisa Bernard. Okay. We have folks online. Mitchell Marks.
Hello?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Are you Mitchell Marks?
I'm Lisa Bernard. I'm joining the Zoom meeting. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, I just want to say thank you to the mayor, the city council, and the council members. Just like the ladies before me, I had similar questions about this homeowner assistance program, since we are at the end of the agenda. My questions have been answered somewhat, knowing that we're not going to get definite answers, because that item hasn't been brought up. So just like Ms. Brown said before, we want to be made aware of the, how the assistance program is going to work. Will the survivors and descendants have first choice? Or is this money going to be distributed to any resident that lives in Palm Springs that was not part of PS Section 14? Will my family, will me, my siblings, be able to afford one of these homes and give first priority? That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vince Nicholas. Vince, go ahead.
Let me unmute.
No, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. Vince Nicholas with Community Housing Opportunities Corporation. I'm also a local resident in the Snore Sunrise community. I'm speaking on behalf of Item 3B, and I submitted additional comments this evening. Hopefully, staff will go through those with you. My only question, I'd like to request a meeting with the city manager and director of community development to go over the RFP that was submitted for 10/25. So I'd like to make, if you're available, we'd like to get a meeting together, if that's okay, for debriefing. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Karen White Coleman, please. Karen, can you hear us? Karen, if you can hear us, we can't hear you. Karen, you're muted. Are you able to unmute?
Hello?
There we go. We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. I'm Karen Wyatt Coleman. I'm a survivor, Section 14. I was standing in agreement with the two other women that spoke, trying to understand this whole process of how this housing is going to move forward, as, and I stand in total agreement. The questions have already been asked, that, and I guess we wait to the end of the agenda, which is now, right? But I thank you for being heard and giving us this opportunity.
All right, thank you. Is Philip in the waiting room?
Hello?
Philip, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah. Well, you know, I am a Section 14 survivor, and I have some descendants, but regarding the amount that is going to be used, 200,000, I don't know exactly. Is that for like the whole loan, or is it per person? I would like more detail on how that amount is going to be distributed. And like the other ladies that have already spoken about the initiative of the amount that's going to be used for the loans for the low income, I'd like more detail exactly how is that going to be spread out. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Jesse Lewis James in the waiting room? Regina Wright. Regina, you're up.
Hi, I'm here. I'm here.
There you go. We can hear you.
So I'm, I'm one of the descendants, and I'm also feel the same way as Miki Brown produced regarding the Section 14 and how this money is going to be allocated. I also have concerns, because yes, the city of Palm Springs always, you know, are in control of things, but there are people who actually need assistance in getting these funds available to making sure that it's necessary for all of us that are descendants. So how is the city going to make sure that we actually see this? Because again, there are programs that are out there for low income that we have to qualify for. So is it going to be the same thing with this? Something that's supposed to be given to us, but it's also monitored? So I do feel the same way as Miki Brown, and that's all.
Thank you. Dr. Donna Dudley. Ray Golden. Ray, if you can hear us, you're next. Ray, if you're muted, if you can hear us, please unmute. All right, we'll come back to Ray.
Yes.
Rhonda, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm also a survivor of the Section 14. My question is about the $200,000 for the down payment for a home, but as the gentleman said earlier, well, one of my questions is, the gentleman said earlier that the homes are costing, starting at 400,000 in Palm Springs. So what about the descendants, like my descendants and my grandchildren and great-grandchildren? Do they have to have that? Can they help them? Because most of the relatives have moved out of Palm Springs. They can't afford Palm Springs. So will they be able to help the ones that has lived, that lives in other states? That's my question.
Okay, thank you. Rochelle, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't have any questions outside of the ones that have already been put forth. So I guess I'm just staying to see how those questions are answered.
Sharia, go ahead. We can, you're the next one in line. We can't hear you if you can hear us. We'll come back. Gloria Thompson. Gloria, are you online?
Good evening, council members and the audience. I'm Gloria Thompson. How's everyone tonight?
Super.
Good to hear. I would like to have the question answered by the city council meeting from the audience, and I will compile some questions myself and send it to each and every one of you. And can you forward it to palmspringssection14@gmail.com? Because I'm sure our members will be, you know, asking us these questions as well, and we don't have all the answers. So hopefully, that's something you can do for us as a board member. We can post it on our website and Facebook, you know, some of these questions. Is that something you can do, yes or no? You can answer that, right?
City clerk, did you get the email? Do we have the email? Okay, we have your, the email that you'd like us to send it to, so thank you so much.
Yes, and thank you. And I will compile some questions myself, so, to add to it, so we can inform these, our people properly.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's it.
Is it Mitchell Marks, city clerk? Mitchell Marks, are you in the waiting room now?
I am waiting here, yes.
Wonderful. Well, we can hear you now.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about Item 3A at this meeting. We have operated a short-term rental property in Palm Springs since 2018. We are blessed and proud to be part of the city's tourism industry, as well as contributing to the local economy by employing other mom-and-pop operations like pool and home cleaners and gardeners. I digress here, but I want to give a shout-out to the city's special program compliance vacation rental team. They are wonderful people, always professional, and a pleasure to work with. I urge you to please oppose any measures to lower the annual cap of stays. In fact, I ask you to please consider raising the cap. For the first time since 2018, we have lost money on our vacation rental in 2024. This is due to two factors. First, the momentum gained by large hotels in Palm Springs in recent years, and second, the perception that Palm Springs is an undesirable place to visit during summer months due to heat and humidity. We have a four-night minimum stay at our property. In 2023 and 2024, we had zero stays during the summer months. This year, we lowered the minimum stay during the summer months to two nights. The good news is we got eight bookings over this summer. The bad news is that was a big chunk out of our 36-stay cap. Each two-night summer stay reduces the number of more profitable four-night stays we can book during the rest of the year. We are currently losing money with a 36-stay cap, so lowering the cap would make the operation financially infeasible. But we want to do more than just minimize losses. We want to thrive and prosper along with the rest of the tourism in our community. This is why I ask you to please consider raising the cap. There is no solid data linking stay caps with quality of life in our neighborhoods, but stay caps do have an adverse effect on the quality of, an ability of vacation rental owners to contribute, to contribute in a positive manner to our city. The bottom line is, we tried-
All right, Mayor Val Hernandez. Deanna Ime. Mary Moore. Ray Golden. Ray, you can, you're next up, please.
I have no further questions than the one that have been answered. I'll wait on the-
Were you commenting on 3C?
Section 14, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any others? Did I get them all?
Yeah, Sheree is still online.
Oh. Why did we miss Sheree?
You called her. She was muted.
Oh. Sheree, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, okay, we can hear you. So you can go ahead now.
I am Sharia Oba-Yuana. I am a descendant of Section 14. My mother, Kay Darling, is a survivor, and I have the same questions that everyone else has asked already, and I'll yield my time to the answer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now do we-
We have someone, Kim.
I don't have a Kim, but you show it. Kim?
That they're calling in.
Oh. Kim, you're up, if you can hear us. Oh, is this Kim Essie?
Yes.
Ah, okay. Kim, we called you earlier, but now you're on the phone.
Oh, yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes, I'm calling, of course, regarding Section 14, and I have the same questions that were mentioned before, and ideally, my concern, ideally, what I would like to know more about, is this a loan or a grant? And ideally, I wanted to say that this is a great opportunity, for the city of Palm Springs, of course, to make reparations and to be a city that, you know, is a shining light for the world, and so to be very mindful and aware of the opportunities that this presents for you, and what it could do for a community that suffered much loss. So I would like to know more questions about what this really means, and for you to be mindful that this is an opportunity for restorative leadership, to show California and the nation what Palm Springs is not afraid to do, to right historic wrongs with courage, compassion, and integrity, on behalf of Section 14 families, survivors, descendants, and allies. Thank you, city council, for this time, and I'll wait for additional information.
All right, thank you so much.
So Ray Golden, Ray?
And is Lisa Bernard in now?
Lisa Bernard?
She was also here. I mean, she put in a note, but she is not here.
She's on. Ray and Lisa are on.
Ray, hey, Ray, can you hear us now? I think Ray talked.
I've talked as well. This is Lisa Bernard. I've talked as well.
Okay, thank you. So we've got everybody. Is this for now? And city clerk, nobody else online? Did we get everybody?
Nope, I think we got everybody.
All right, beautiful. Kenny Cassidy, how did he not get in here?
And speaking on Item 3A, I'll make it very brief. I'd like to thank the council and city staff for moving this conversation along and for taking action to help streamline and- and for taking action to help streamline and improve the vacation rental ordinance. Our ordinance is working really well to ensure we are good neighbors with effective enforcement. Complaint calls and citations are very low, all while hosting guests who love Palm Springs and feeding the tourism and economic ecosystems, helping make Palm Springs a better place for all of us to live. In fact, I speak from personal experience when I say our ordinance and practices are held up as an example around the country for how to get it right. I have presented at a couple of forums in the last 10 days where people were asking, well, how did Palm Springs do that so well? So it really is true that the country is watching us and how well we do it. Of course, there's always room for improvement, so taking a regular look at the data and making adjustments is appreciated. We support the recommendations the staff, in the staff report, and encourage you to adopt them. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Just received one card from Marquesia? Makaja?
Makaja, you're next.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you all for the approval of the passing for section 14 and the reparations that you have already given to us. And I want to remind you all that God, this is God's country. And the Lord is watching each and every one of us to make sure that we aren't taking it more advantage of what you guys have already offered. And also making sure that you guys do have it in your hearts to do the right thing. So I just wanted to stand up here and remind everyone in the audience and everyone sitting up there that we are all children of God, and we appreciate you very much. But we also do look forward to getting our answers, our questions answered, as well as being able to speak up about the things that are taking place. I'm not too sure how involved we are going to be in this process. And so I would like some of those items to also be addressed. Will we be made aware of things prior to, you know, 24 hours before? And be able to actually make our claims to certain things and even make our statements made? So God bless you all, and thank you so much.
Now, Madam Clerk, are we good to go?
No further speakers.
All right, thank you all. The next item is the consent calendar. I entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without item M. And we're just commenting on E and F, right? Oh, you're pulling E and F. E. And F is... On F is just comments. And your comment on F are pulling F? Okay, so just comments on F. We're pulling M and E. So do we have a motion to accept the consent calendar without items M and E? And I'm recusing on M. Motion made by Councilmember Bernstein, seconded by Councilmember Garner. Motion carries 5-0. So what are we going to do first? City attorney?
Usually comments. If there's simply comments without any action, those are usually taken first.
Okay, so comments on F? Councilmember Bernstein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, this is the petition of certification for Old Las Palmas to do the underground utility assessment district. And I did want to confirm, I spoke with the city engineer. There is another ordinance that will have to be done for the connection fees for those homes that is not addressed yet. It wasn't in our other one, so that will apparently be coming back at some point. I know some people asked me, and our city engineer confirmed that. So the undergrounding is all addressed in our current ordinance. The connection fees from the homes to the new underground wires need to be addressed later. Thank you.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. I also have a comment on this. So just to clarify for the public, if you weren't here for the original discussion, Old Las Palmas Neighborhood petitioned the city to pass an ordinance to allow them to do underground grounding of the utility poles, which is wonderful, but the cost is for them. So you have to get 60% of the neighborhood to agree to do this. And then they cover, the neighborhood covers the cost, each individual homeowner. So I voted no on the original ordinance because my concern is that while Old Las Palmas Neighborhood has the finances to do this, I'm concerned about gentrification in some of the other areas of our city and the cost if you have 60% of the neighborhood voting yes. But then what about the rest of the folks who voted no and likely voted no for financial reasons? So I'm highlighting this again. I have no problem approve, you know, with this item being approved for this, this neighborhood in this instance. But I do want to continue to flag for the city and for the public that as we move forward with other areas to do undergrounding, we need to be mindful of how we're going to be able to make sure that people can benefit from it, but they're also not forced to move out of their home or damaged by the cost of doing this undergrounding. So again, it's, no one's at risk of this right now. But I just, I want to keep making sure that people are thinking about how we address this for future neighborhoods. And that's it.
Okay, any other comment? Okay, so can we have, may we please have a staff report on E, please?
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, Joel Montalvo, city engineer. The item before you today is for approval and agreement with the Rurshead County Transportation Commission to receive funding from SB 821 for our Racket Club road reconfiguration project. This project's been, well, it was initially envisioned through our pedestrian master plan that was done in 2022. It identified multiple areas of the city that could use engineering review to see if we can make intersections safer, streets safer. And this particular project was chosen as one of the major projects that needed to be done. So staff has conducted many meetings with the public. We've done public outreach. And the team is ready to move on to engineering and final design to move it on to construction. So this particular item is just simply to receive $700,000 from, 727,986, to be exact, from Rurshead County Transportation Commission. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Questions from council? Mayor Protem?
Thank you so much, Joel. Really excited to see one of the kind of hotspots that were identified in that pedestrian master plan. Can you, there were many. There were, I think, like over 30, right, of, from that original master plan in 2022?
That's correct, but those, the number seems high, but there are different types of projects, if you will. And over time, we've been addressing those projects. Today, you approve HSIP cycle line construction. That's where the intersection. So those intersections, many of them were identified in that pedestrian master plan as part of those projects as well. So the city is proactive. The teams were active trying to improve intersections in areas where we have issues with, you know, safety.
And then this project, in terms of the many out, community outreach meetings and engagement, is kind of reflective of the scope and scale of this project, you know, how long it is. The fire department is right on Racket Club. Is, would you, not all the projects that were identified all require that level of, like, years, like, a year worth of community meetings, right? You're actively working on the other ones at the same time.
That is correct. Like I said, some of those projects are identified as traffic signal improvements. Don't really, those don't really require community engagement. We look at what's existing and we use newer technologies. This one in particular affects a long, large corridor. So did the South Palm Canyon project, which was also one that we have held community meetings. So we took direction from council. They really wanted us to do outreach when projects really affect neighborhoods, and that's what we've done. And we continue to do so.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other comments? Councilmember Bernstein?
So I just want to confirm, Joel, this is for the funding, but you're going to come back to council for design approval and then bid approval?
That's correct. The funding will go towards construction. And the team is actively working on the design. Once the design is 100% complete and the specifications are ready, we will come back to council for authorization to proceed with bidding the project.
Okay, because there are, you know, as, this is a very complicated project. And I know the last community meeting, unfortunately, was scheduled the same time as a community meeting for a new housing development in Racket Club West, so people were conflicted. But there was some great information there that not everybody got to see. So hopefully, we can take all the information that's been presented at these meetings and include that in the staff report when it comes back. And maybe even in advance so they can look at it. We still have, it's very complicated because you have the fire station there. You also have the school there. We've had a lot of accidents in speeding. We have trucks there that aren't supposed to use it. This has become a main thoroughfare for exiting, which is when it gets crowded. They all go into the neighborhood, so you have neighborhoods like Racket Club West that is actually opposing any kind of road diet because they're concerned about that. And I want to make sure we address the different concerns that have come up through these meetings in that final, when it comes to council.
And of course, the team, the design team has been at all the meetings. They help run the meetings. They've taken all the concerns. They've taken input from the community. From the very beginning, we have websites that took in input. And the team has taken all that information and condensed it and put it into the design. So we'd be happy to come back with all that information in one, another staff report, if you will, once we're done with the design. And so that the community gets all the information.
As complete as possible, because I know you've had lots of different questions over time. And I want to make sure all the residents of the area and the neighboring area are, get to see it.
Right. This project, yeah, essentially is intended to slow traffic down, improve safety, you know, do signal timing throughout the corridor. So all in all, it's a good project that's going to improve the safety throughout this corridor.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions? Mayor Protem?
Just a comment. You know, I just want to say thank you for kind of keep moving all the different pieces of that pedestrian master plan. And I think sometimes we hear our communities say, we have a master plan for this, and a master plan for that, and a master plan for this. And we don't always get all the updates of some of the smaller work. And so if we can find a way to kind of house all that information, maybe in Engage Palm Springs or someplace so people understand where that priority list is and recognizing that some projects like this might take much longer than others. And we want to make sure we're accessing all the eligible funding that we can. But other projects are more movable, and we're working on them. And so finding a landing spot where that information can be housed would be great.
All right. May I entertain a motion to accept staff recommendation? Motion made by Councilmember Bernstein, seconded by Mayor Protem. Motion carries 5-0. And now I'm turning over to Mayor Protem.
Can we get a staff report, please?
Of course. Good evening. I'm Nick Gonzalez, Director of Parks and Recreation. Before you this evening for item 1M is an amendment to the agreements with Greater Palm Springs Pride. This amendment updates our existing partnership to better reflect the true scope, costs, and the impact of the annual Palm Springs Pride Festival Parade and Block Party. The amendment increases the city's sponsorship contribution from $125,000 annually to $350,000 annually. That is covered all through in-kind services for city services that we provide to help cover the cost of the, of the events. This amendment presents a balanced approach, acknowledging the real cost of having a large-scale community event come into the city that while also promoting inclusivity and, and our tradition in providing really great, large, special events here. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Yeah, so just to confirm, this is all-in-kind city services that is-
Correct. Yeah, this is all-in-kind services that we account for on our end.
And primarily, what city services are those?
So this covers all public works costs related to streets, facilities, the downtown maintenance team, fire department, police costs, any additional private security costs, restrooms, ambulance services, and other barricade rentals for the whole parade festival and block party.
Okay, and last year, do we have any idea, I mean, the city, I think, had to absorb a lot of public safety costs. Is that correct?
That is correct. So last year, approximately, the total amount of cost was around $340,000. And we are anticipating costs to be about $350,000 this year.
Okay, and maybe this is a better for Chief Mills. Were all of those public safety directly requested by Pride? Or is those things that you recommended and our fire department recommended?
Many of those are what I recommend in order to keep the crowds as safe as possible.
Okay, because you've gone the extra effort to make sure our residents and visitors and businesses are safe.
Correct.
And if we didn't do this, potentially Pride may, may have to skimp on some of that, and, and that would be not great for us. And, and so is there any other option to sort of cut the public safety? Somebody just has to find this money somewhere?
The reason it's that is such a big bill is because we're covering it over a three- or four-day period. And we have to, it takes a lot of staff to cover that large of an area. So we've looked at it critically. There are a couple of things we cut out of this year's function, such as mobile field force contingency. But I believe this is as low as I can go in order to keep a crowd of 200,000 people safe.
Yeah, and, and do you think, given recent events in the world, that this has made it even more important and-
Well, given the climate that we see and what we're seeing, you know, threats nationwide, none here, but nationwide, I am certainly concerned that we need to have adequate staffing to make sure that we keep it as safe as possible.
Okay, thank you. And you put in here an economic impact number. I don't know what, did you put that in the report?
Yes, we did. We, we got that number provided by Pride.
And what was that number? I forgot it too. It's like 58 million?
It's approximately $38 million of economic impact for area hotels, shops, restaurants, and other local Palm Springs businesses.
Okay, and I would just add personally, I think it's, the economic impact is not just from the three-day event. It lasts throughout the year, and Pride and our inclusivity is part of our brand. And so I know that we see that, that continue throughout. You know, so it's probably much greater than that in the ripple effect. I also wanted just to mention that it's not coming out of any other general fund. So you already had 125,000 in parks?
Correct.
And then we had 100,000 out of our economic development, which we had allocated earlier this year at 500,000. But we hadn't, we had funded, but not allocated.
Correct.
Okay, and then PS Resorts is giving 125 out of ours, what the city gets?
Correct. The match that the city receives from PS Resorts, we are reallocating that to help cover the difference here.
Okay, so does that mean it is a decrease, decrease in any other funding that PS Resorts did?
That is the PS Resorts funding, so we're utilizing it for, for this event to cover these costs. Any other events coming forward, we are looking at ways to make those whole and cover those as well.
Okay, but no other event we're looking at cutting down?
No.
Okay, okay. You know, I think this, and this is something that basically we, and I should just say, this didn't just come up at the last minute. We knew as of last year, these were our costs. So this wasn't a last-minute bailout or something for Pride. This is something that we could have actually presented six months ago and just didn't. Is that right?
And Councilmember Bernstein, if I could just add in, council members that were here prior to the last election will remember, we had a brief conversation about this last year. And the whole point is really to align our internal budget with the, with the internal costs that are needed for this. Obviously, if some of the costs potentially go down slightly, we'll be able to adjust internally and, and make those changes.
Okay, and I appreciate this. I think, you know, one of the reasons I pulled this, first of all, I think it should have been not on consent so we could discuss it. But not everybody was quite aware of where this was coming from. And not everybody was aware of, obviously, those internal conversations last year when we knew what the budget is. And so we could have, I think, as a council and a staff, done a better job in educating the public as to why this is coming up. But, you know, this is a huge event that poses a particular risk for our residents and visitors. You know, we have the best police and fire out there, and they've, they have said, this is what we can do to keep us safe. And it certainly makes sense to me to do it, to have a great event that benefits the whole city and throughout the year. And obviously, as years go on, if there's ways to cut it more, then we can look at that as well.
Thank you, Nick. So can you just clarify for me, in terms of, we have a lot of parades that happen in this city, and we provide these same types of in-kind services for those parades as well. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so I think one of the things on this is, yeah, I would have liked to see this much earlier brought to us, especially since we did talk about the budget in, back in May and June. But I also want to make sure that we're clear that this is, these are services that we provide to all of our different parades and festivals, but obviously at different ranges because some of them are smaller, some of them are bigger.
Correct.
Well, I think Pride is the biggest, all of them are smaller than, than this one. But I, I do want to make sure that in general that we have accurate accounting for all of these events. So if there's any other events where we need to, you know, just have a clearer picture of what we're spending, that would be great.
Yes, we, we are revamping the way that we're tracking costs of all of these big special events. And so we are implementing a new internal process so that we can ensure that we provide accurate numbers way ahead of any budgetary process.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just, you know, historically, you know, these large city-sponsored events and, and the smaller ones, as Councilmember Gardner just mentioned, parades, but also film festival, Pride, the, the costs have always exceeded, always, always, always exceeded what these sponsorships were because when the police chief and the fire chief come forward with ways that they need to make it secure, we've always took that on as the city's responsibility. So I think what's good here is you're actually memorializing this in this amendment, so that's good. I think that that's good because we have a better sense. The other part, it's good that the, the PS Resorts funding is you being used, but as we move forward, I presume in future years, if there is budget issues and we have to reduce this, we have the ability to do so. But is, while we can, you know, I, I support this because we've got to rely particularly on the safety to make it safe and certainly the economic benefit on the other end is significant. So this is really just a memorializing of what we've already done. So I think that's probably a good idea. Thank you.
I have some questions as well. And I guess maybe I'll start with the police chief. For the, kind of the public safety requirements of, that are listed in our agreement, particularly contributions and support services provided by the city, has there ever been any concerns by Pride or any of the other organizers that there's something that we can't offer or we can't meet? Or has there been a kind of a feeling of the city is doing everything they can for the public safety needs of, of Pride?
The feedback that I've gotten, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem, excuse me, is that people are overall happy with the amount of service that they see, the amount of protection and the configuration that it's in. People feel very comfortable here at Pride as well as the other events that we have all over the city, which is a pretty heavy lift, but we staff right to the level of what we believe we need to keep it safe.
And Nick, similarly, for kind of the public works and kind of the closing of the streets and permitting, has there been kind of an equal level of satisfaction from the organizers on making sure this is as excellent an event that we value and it reflects kind of how important it is to the city?
Yes, we worked very closely with Greater Palm Springs Pride for several months leading up to the event to ensure that we're looking at all the road closures and ensuring that the event is safe, understanding what their event needs are for all their different stages and other amenities that they're bringing into the event area. And so we have multiple conversations with them as part of the special events planning team process, the application process leading up to approval of the event. And so we all seem to be on board with the level of services that we are providing for these events.
Okay, great. And then kind of on the reverse, are there, as we're reviewing this agreement, is there any opportunities for making sure that we're getting all the information that we are needing about the cost of the event and kind of scale of the event for every year so we have that internal documentation?
Yes, so what we are doing now is, as I alluded to earlier, we are ensuring that we have true accurate costs for all services that go into the event as we are revising the way that we are permitting and planning for all of our special events that are coming into town. And then we are ensuring also with the event organizers that we get accurate information as far as attendance numbers and other economic impact reports as we can share so that we can accurately paint a picture of how successful each event was. So we are doing that.
Great, great. I'm thinking in particular, item 3.3 in the agreement, for a post-event report within two months of the event. It'd be great to use that as an opportunity to talk about the success of that event, what it's costing, what those trends are in cost, so that as a council, we can ensure that we're budgeting appropriately and we're having that conversation well in advance to the subsequent parade but, and Pride event, but really, it, it's happening as a lookback of the previous one, not immediately before the next one. And if we have any of the ones from the previous years, I think that's still really valuable, not just looking ahead, but making sure we're capturing that for, since 2022.
Absolutely.
Another opportunity, so since this agreement was made, there's been a complete revamp of our grants and sponsorship program. This agreement was done before that, so those don't apply, correct?
That is my understanding, correct.
Okay, one thing I would propose is that the requirements for our major sponsorships of over $75,000 are applicable to this one. And I would suggest that we do this for every contract renewal or agreement review for any major grant sponsorship. But this is really what we want to make sure our organizations are as strong as possible to be able to go after major sponsorships from the city, but also from other, you know, kind of corporate and other entities as well. In particular, the audited financials would be one that I would think would be appropriate to, to request, given that the, this is a pretty significant in-kind support.
Yes, if council wishes to do that, we can add that as part of this amendment to follow not only those grants and sponsorship guidelines for over $75,000, but also include that key piece of the audited financials report.
Can I also make a suggestion, and maybe we can do this when we do the liaisons and things in December, is that we have a liaison to Film Festival, to the Animal Shelter, to the Chamber, to the Plaza, but we also, we don't have a council liaison, I mean, I guess we do to Pride, other than the mayor, but to Pride and the Art Museum, who we do a lot of funding too. And I think that might make sense to have a council liaison to those organizations considering that we're in large, you know, big partnerships with them. So I, I'm not, I realize we have to discuss this in December, but, or maybe the mayor or Protem, when you're mayor and you do the list, you could think about that.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, so I, I like the liaison idea. I guess one question I have, this agreement goes up to 350. Last year, our, our costs have gone up since just last year to, from 340, so is there some type of X percent over? Or how do we make sure we're not kind of in the same position next year, two years from now, up until the agreement of 2027, where we're still going over? And how can we ensure that our, your department and all the departments are being, are able to budget appropriately? Are we budgeting at the 350 or based off of what the expected costs are going to be for that year?
If this is approved, we will budget at the 350. Anything over and above, we will have those conversations with the organizers so that they are helping to cover those costs. One thing that we are implementing now or soon is the Meridian Barricades, so that may help save some costs on some of the barricade rentals. And then we'll continue to monitor the costs each year as we understand kind of the event needs and if any of that changes, we'll have those conversations with the organizer.
Okay, so hopefully with some of the oversight, the, the expanded grant requirements, the liaison, my, my, I want to make sure our agreements with our organizations and stakeholders reflect what we're actually doing. And so my, I was a little surprised about how far the 2022 agreement was considering we were already absorbing those in-kind resources. So if it looks like it's not, I would really like to see this sooner rather than later. Okay. Any other questions? There a motion to approve?
I want to make a motion to approve with the recommendations from the mayor of Protem.
Do we want to get the mayor back? I'm happy to hand this over back.
Okay, if I can indulge council, if we can move item 3C out in front, I'd appreciate doing that. So maybe we have a staff report on item 3C.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of staff. My name is Noia Arreciga. I am a community development administrator with our Housing and Development Department. The item here before you is a program that we were asked to create to help and establish a first-time homebuyer assistance program for all the residents of the city of Palm Springs, in addition to providing a, a preference to Section 14 survivors and descendants. So I'm going to read out, I think it's very important to provide, the background and the program that we noted in the staff report. So in November 2024, the Palm Springs City Council approved a comprehensive or restorative justice in housing initiative stemming from Section 14 settlement discussions. This included public monument to honor and remember former Section 14 residents, naming a city park in honor of Section 14 survivors, providing letters of support for community-driven center of focus in cultural and racial healing, and investing $1 million over five years to provide entrepreneurial training, mentorships, and access to capital for women and BIPOC entrepreneurs in Palm Springs. The city council also identified funding for housing programs as part of the commitments to the survivors and descendants of Section 14. Formation of a community land trust, or CLT, was discussed as a possible vehicle to create affordable housing. A CLT would be nonprofit entity requiring a certain number of staff and legal real estate and property management expertise for it to become operational. The staff is still evaluating the time and cost involved with forming a CLT. The proposed first-time homebuyer down payment assistance program is aimed at helping Palm Springs residents achieve homeownership and will be targeted outreach to survivors and descendants of Section 14. The program will provide down payment assistance to first-time homebuyers with targeted outreach efforts to ensure Section 14 families are aware of the opportunity. The Department of Housing and Community Development subsequently collaborated with HWS to develop the PS First-Time Homebuyer Program. HWS currently manages similar programs countywide and will provide technical administration, underwriting, compliance monitoring, and reporting in cooperation with the city. In preparation for implementation, city staff met with representative from Palm Springs Regional Association of Realtors. The representatives expressed full support and enthusiasm for the program, noting that it will fill critical gap in affordability and access for first-time local buyers. So the Palm Springs First-Time Homebuyer Program will provide down payment assistance for up to 50% of the home purchase price, not to exceed 200,000. This will be structured as a silent mortgage with 15-year affordability term and the loan will be forgivable to the homeowner as long as they maintain as a primary residence for the first 15-year term. So, you know, to address a lot of the concern from the Section 14 survivors and descendants as, as far as, you know, the input and involvement that they would be having when the program is, is started, this is merely the framework to begin that program. There is plans to include Section 14 descendants and survivors in, in the outreach when the program is actually started. So we are, I can go over some primary key details as far as the, how the agreement with the county would work and actually kind of a overview of what the program will be. So this agreement that we're bringing before you would be initial five-year agreement with the County of Riverside, so they would help the city of Palm Springs administer the program. Very important to note that they currently already run a program very similar to ours or what we are proposing before you and is, the difference is that we have changed the thresholds for how the program would operate, meaning the assistance for the actual down payments is higher and the, taking into account our local market for home prices, we have increased the thresholds to allow, you know, to, for our residents, our eligible residents to be able to purchase a home. So we took all that into account because there are, you know, front-end ratios and back-end ratios, income requirements that a eligible applicant would have. And those would be in themselves barriers for them to be able to afford a home. So we took all that into account and you may call this, you know, the human factor, right? Because we, what we're, we're asked to do, you know, when our department was asked to create this program, is to create a program that would help, again, first-time homebuyers achieve homeownership and, you know, and create generational wealth. So clearly, you know, we are in an area where home prices are very, very high, so this program would, would help in that. So again, initially, it would be a five-year commitment with the County of Riverside with an option to increase in additional five years. This, this program or the agreement would be funded through already allocated housing set-aside money that came, comes from TOT tax. So this again comes from the agreement and the Section 14 settlement to set aside a million dollars annually for 10 years. So we're taking that into account. The county would be, the cost for the county to administer the program, we were able to negotiate down to a 10% fee to administer the program, which is very low comparing to how a, a program of this size would cost to run and the amount of staff and, you know, there's a lot of loan underwriting, a lot of work, a lot of customer service that needs to happen, a lot of servicing, servicing of the loans for the life of the loans that would need to happen. So the county would, obviously would take that head-on under, obviously, the administration of city staff for this program. So we also would use 90% effectively of the funds for the assistance because we are using, again, out of the million dollars that we're setting aside, 10% goes to pay for the administration fees and 80% is going to go towards the assistance of the program. So that assistance is, is noted in, in, in the contract as 22.5 installment payments that county would ask us to reimburse. Again, priority would be giving, would be given to Section 14 survivors and descendants. And how we have proposed with your approval is that we would do a 20% initial set-aside allocation to give preference to Section 14 survivors for the first 60 days. And given that if nobody, you know, claims that 20%, then it would go to the general allocation, to the general annual allocation, and then the remaining portion of that 20% would be given to, again, the, the general allocation. So if after the 20%, let's say we were impacted and we receive more requests than what we have a lot of for, then the remaining portion of that, we would go 50-50 between Section 14 survivors and regular eligible residents or, or residents that are non-Section 14. So effectively, again, if the program is So effectively, again, if the program is impacted, we would have the 20% initial reserve for Section 14 plus the additional 50% of the, of the remaining of the funds. We are operating this program under a 140% MII income limit, which is fairly higher than what this typical program would do. Normally, they go up to 120%. So this gives the opportunity, again, for people that, you know, have done, you know, have been responsible and have done everything they can to reach homeownership, but they just need that extra boost. So, for example, if we go into our guidelines, page 20 of 32, in the guidelines of the staff report, for a household size of one, it starts at $109,000, and we delineate to a household size of eight, which goes to $206,000. So, again, we are increasing the thresholds to be able to give that affordability to the residents. We also have set the maximum property value at $750,000, because we did some research as far as, again, every situation is unique, and we have to take into account a person's income, you know, their affordability factor, what can they actually buy, and what can they actually keep in the long term. So, you know, medium household price for the city of Palm Springs, you know, at the time when we got the reports, they were just north of $900,000. So we kind of compared that to what the county is currently doing with the program, and we increased, they go, they go up to 500, close to $600,000 for maximum home price. We went to 750, again, taking into account that our home prices here locally are higher. So we also allow for not just single-family residences, but also for condominiums and manufactured homes. So those are the major key points. Here with us is also Juan Garcia, which is Deputy Director for HWS, and we are here to answer any technical questions or any concerns. But I do also want to, again, just clarify for the benefit of the public that we do have a plan for targeted outreach and to also include the community, particularly Section 14 descendants and survivors, so that we can, obviously, give them the opportunity to have this information before the program launches. So this agreement is, before you, is so that if you approve it, we, the next step would be to take it to the Board of Supervisors Council Meeting, I'm sorry, Board of Supervisors Meeting, and then they would approve it, and then we can go ahead and launch the program. So if everything goes well, then everything is approved, then we are looking at possibly launching the program early January. And that is all? Does you have questions?
I imagine there's going to be a question or two.
Yes.
But to start, can people outside of Palm Springs apply for the program?
So it's very important that the purchasing, it's by the guidelines, it was assigned that the purchase needs to be made in the city of Palm Springs, within the city limits. However, if you are a Section 14 descendant or survivor, a lot of them, you know, still don't live here in the city, so they would be able to purchase here in the city, within the city limits. For the rest of the eligible participants, they would need to provide proof that they are current Palm Springs residents. So another thing I need to note is that anyone that would self-certify that they are a Section 14 descendant or survivor, then we would go ahead and look at, you know, the database that our city attorney has, and we would confirm whether they are or they're not, and then move on with the process. So in the same token, we would confirm that any other participant that is claiming to be Palm Springs resident, we would confirm that they are.
Okay, and is that, what page would that be on, talking about living outside of Palm Springs and still being able to qualify?
I will have to go back to you then.
Jay Verada, Director of Housing and Community Development, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. A year ago, the council directed us to come up with programs that help with addressing the needs of the Section 14 survivors and descendants, and we had proposed some economic development programs, cultural education programs, and housing programs. So getting to the long-winded answer, Mr. Mayor, if the individual is a Section 14 survivor, it's baked in that the program is meant to address Section 14 survivors and Palm Springs residents.
Okay. All right, and then there was another question. How, how, what's the process of keeping people who applied informed of the process, and how will they stay up to speed when, after they've applied?
Right. I'm not sure if Juan wants to address that. The county will be administering the step-by-step process for each of the individuals, and they will be informed if they still need additional information to submit. It's, it's basically the customer service that the county can provide, but I think Juan can address that better than me.
Good evening, counsel. Juan Garcia, Deputy Director with Riverside County Department of Housing and Workforce Solutions. To your question, Mayor, as far as how would, how will we notify the, the participants? Typically, when, when, when somebody applies and they become eligible, they receive a reservation letter. After they receive the reservation letter, the next thing they must do is apply for a first mortgage. The funding that is being provided as part of this program is down payment assistance in the form of a silent second loan, and what that means that no mortgage payment is made on the loan. However, they do have to be able to qualify and have credit where they need to be able to apply for a first mortgage, because they're going to be making regular mortgages. So the next step would be to apply for a mortgage, get pre-qualified, and once that happens and they get pre-qualified, they must attend an eight-hour class. After, after they attend a class, then they're able to hire a real estate agent to help them identify a home within the city limits. They identify a home, they submit an offer, the offer is accepted by the seller, and then we're able to, escrow's open, and then we're able to provide, prepare the loan documents, submit them into escrow, and then close escrow, and then they're home buyers. The city's loan will be recorded on title for a period of 15 years, and as part of the loan compliance, we verify that the homeowner continues living in the home, because that's one of the requirements. So we do that as part of the annual monitoring, and so that would, that would be like the whole process. I know, yes, you have something else, but that's the whole process in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you. And Jay, you said that the program is created for survivor and descendants. Where, where does that say that in the documentation? Because I don't see it where it says exclusive to.
Mr. Arachiga will provide the answer.
Yes, so, again, to clarify, throughout the guidelines, which is, it is Attachment C, beginning on page one of 32, or page 22 on Item C as it is printed, we have an introduction page, and it starts with the purpose. So we have four different kind of paragraphs talking, you know, giving a little bit of a narrative of how, and, you know, as far as the background and how this program came about, and it's essentially, it's baked in into the entire guideline document, that anywhere there is a reference about an activity or a service that these guidelines provide, it's baked in, literally, it says for Section 14 survivors, actually, it says for eligible Palm Springs residents, and preference given to, priority given to Section 14 survivors and descendants. So literally, this is the start of the document of where we begin to note that, but throughout the entire document, we say that. So if you do a quick-
What, what do we say? What are the words we say? Because what you just said isn't what I heard from Jay, that this is exclusive to Section 14 survivors and descendants.
Yeah, we, we didn't make it exclusive to Section 14 survivors and descendants, because otherwise, the program would only be for that. But if, if, again, if that's the council direction, then obviously, you know, we could do that. But this program, it was assigned to be eligible for eligible Palm Springs residents and priority given to Section 14 survivors and descendants.
Yeah, okay, I'm just wanting to get clarification.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I wasn't clear on that. That was the direction, as Noia explained, given to us a year ago, when the council directed us to create these programs. It was for Section 14 survivors and descendants and Palm Springs residents. They don't have to be the same survivors and residents and be Palm Springs residents. If they are Palm Springs residents and their income qualified, they can participate in the program.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that clarification. And in the, during the staff report, you confused me a little bit, and I hope I'm not the only one who got confused. You said 20% of 20% of 20, if it's not used, then that 20% goes back somewhere. What, what were you talking about when you were using all these 20%?
Yeah, I understood, yeah. So we have essentially, we have essentially $1 million. So out of that, $1 million off the top, $100,000 is going to go to pay for the administration annual, annually, that we're going to be paying the county. So out of that, there's an 80% remaining out of the million dollars, so it's 800,000, I'm sorry, $900,000. So 20% of $900,000, which is $180,000, somebody check my math, $180,000 is going to be the initial reserved allocation to, to give specifically to Section 14 survivors and descendants. So every year, 20%, it is written in here, that we are going to, straight off the top of, of the allocation, which is, straight out of the $900,000, 20% of that is going to be reserved for Section 14 survivors and descendants, and then the remainder of that $900,000, so 900,000 minus 180,000, the remainder of that is going to be for, basically, the, the rest of, of, of the eligible applicants. So it could be that, because this is, will be a first-call, first-serve basis, obviously with priority given to Section 14, so it could be that the first, you know, 10 people that ask for assistance and they're on a waitlist, it could be that they're, they're all Section 14 survivors and descendants, or, you know, it could be a mixture, right, of eligible Palm Springs residents and Section 14 survivors. So we implemented those kind of guidelines, so that in the case that, because we are expecting the program to be very impacted, then we can fairly inadequately distribute the assistance. So again, 10% off the top, and then after that, the 20% of that assistance goes specifically to Section 14 survivors and, and descendants, and then after that, it goes to the general public and, or the eligible residents, and if we are impacted after that, then we're going to split it 50/50. So it would be 50% of that assistance goes to eligible, regular eligible Palm Springs residents, and then the remainder to Section 14 survivors and descendants.
Okay.
Hopefully, that makes sense.
And is that written down in here?
Yes.
The 50/50? Okay. Thank you for that. The Attachment H, where is Attachment H from?
Attachment H is the original PowerPoint that was presented to the council last year.
So did council vote on this? Was this part of a resolution that council voted on?
I believe so. I will look to the, Mr. City Attorney. Yes.
Okay. So Attachment H says that the allowance is $100,000. So where did we take the leap from 100 to 200?
So we took into account, again, you know, looking at it from a community development lens, right? How can we effectively get the assistance out? If we were only doing $100,000 and we do a little bit of formulation, then we would limit the amount of, basically, amount of assistance, and then people would not be able to qualify, because their purchasing power would basically go down. And if we were, I mean, there are two solutions for that, right? One is that we would allow to, you know, purchase homes outside of the jurisdiction, which, you know, is something that would be contra-effective, because we want to build, you know, we want to continue to have our, our house of affordable stock, homes here in the city. And, and two, the city has really high purchasing, very high prices for homes. So that was the reasoning behind increasing $100,000 to $200,000 assistance, so that we could effectively increase the buying power and the ability for the resident to, to achieve homeownership.
And so is that explained in the, in the rest of the packet? Because I didn't see that explained, that we're, we're making a change from what was originally approved to the reasoning behind why we're going from 100 to 200.
Nope, it is not.
Okay, all right, so let's see. The, the $20,000 administration fee, these loans are administered by financial institutions, right? That are approved and, and the team manages that loan. So if we're giving out maybe five loans a year, $20,000 to administer five people buying a house, how, how is that $20,000 allocated to assist five people buying a home?
So, so Mayor, part of the administration of the program includes managing the, overseeing the loan over the 15-year affordability period. Sometimes what happens with these loans, homebuyers want to refinance their homes, so we had to step in and provide and, and resubordinate our loan and do that sort of stuff, and sometimes there's different things that happen throughout one's life over the 15-year period, where we had to continue servicing the loan. So that's taken into account, as far as like the 10%. I mean, that's kind of standard based on funding that we receive from HUD and funding we receive from the state, and that's kind of what we, what we negotiated with city staff, but that's, that's how we landed on 10%.
Okay. And Jay, for your team, what type, what has the community outreach, outreach been to share the plan that is coming forward and to get input?
We actually focused on the real estate industry, and as was pointed out, we had a meeting with the Coachella, Coachella Valley Association of Realtors, who did find it to be a very good program. A lot of the outreach, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, would, you know, would have been a year ago, when these programs were brought forward and proposed to the city council, and then the city council directed staff to implement these. So, you know, a lot of the decision-making and conclusions from that, in terms of which programs are being forward, were done, I believe, and recommended, and requested, I'm sorry, from the Section 14- from the Section 14 survivor group.
Okay. Beautiful. Well, I hope I got the questions that were asked in public comment. I hope I got those asked. If I didn't, I hope you all will help me remember them. Other questions of staff on, yes, Councilmember Garner?
Thank you so much. So I think the big thing that we're seeing right now, right, is this is very complicated. So I want to break this down a little bit more for folks. We have $1 million. 10% of that $1 million goes to administration of this program. And as was said by county staff, we need people to make sure that people can follow through, that they qualify for this, that they're keeping their home for 15 years, that if they have any questions down the road, that they can get answers. So that's why there's this administrative fee, which is very typical of anything that the city does, we have administration costs. So the county as well has administrative costs. That said, we have an ability as a city to say that we will eat the cost of that administrative fee, right? We, as council, we can make that decision where we can pay the county $100,000 and we can still have $1 million to use for this program.
Councilmember, yes, we could do that. We'd have to determine where that money would come from.
Right. Okay. And that's fine, but it's something that could be done. In terms of the cost for homes, so part of the increase, right, to $200,000 max for this loan is because the cost of homes in Palm Springs are so high. And there's also, in this program, limits. So there, you have to, you can buy a house up to $750,000, a single-family home, $513,000 for a condo, or $361,000 for a manufactured home. Those are the limits. So that's pretty high, which is very different than other places, other cities in the county. This doesn't apply to only low-income residents. This applies to people with incomes up to 140% of the area median income. 140% of the area median income for a family of four is $156,000 of income per year. There is a chart in here that lays it all out. But there's also things like assets. If a family has assets, those are taken into consideration. So as you read through all of this stuff, there's a lot of things, a lot of nuance to who qualifies, how much they qualify for, what kind of housing they could get. And even if you're looking at this max $750,000, which would be about $180,000 that this city would give, then you calculate your mortgage and you're still paying about $4,000 a month in a mortgage because this is very expensive. So in order to even get people to be able to apply for this program, we need to do a lot of outreach to make sure that people understand how it works, how they qualify. You know, you have to keep your home for 15 years. We're giving you the money and we're forgiving the loan, but only after 15 years. If five years in, you want to sell your home, that, you don't get that loan forgiven. So all of this stuff has to really be explained very clearly to the public. And again, because of the cost of these homes, it means that we're looking at only four to five homes if people are maxing out on the 20% down payment. So I think it's really great that we're doing this, but I also think that we have a lot of work to do to make sure that we're educating the public so that they can take full advantage of this. And 20% means, yeah, that there's basically one Section 14 family that can, that gets first priority. Because only five families total get this unless we either lower the amount that we're giving or we increase the amount of money we're funding, which we cannot do at this time, right? That doesn't mean in the future, we cannot, you know, add money to this program, but at this time, we only have $1 million. So I just want to, I hope that that kind of breaks it down a little bit more for stat, for, I'm sorry, for the public, that there is going to be a lot more that has to be done to make sure that everyone knows how to qualify. And this information, I will make sure this information is sent to the Section 14 group to put on their website, to break down. And any upcoming events that we have can be shared as well on how this works. But the other question I have, this is kind of the standard procedure for first-time homebuyer programs, correct? This is like the standard program that the county does. What is our ability to make changes? Do we, are there things that we can change and things that we can't change?
My understanding is it's flexible. The county will administer the program the way the council wants it to be in the agreement. And we'll have Juan comment on that.
Yeah, Councilmember, that's correct. Whatever the changes that the council decides to make, we'll operate the program accordingly. We've already tweaked the current program and it, yes, whatever the council decides, that's the way we'll operate the program.
Okay. Personally, I think that there's still work that we can do on this to make sure that we're in a place where we can effectively impact, make an impact on the community. So I would like, I would like a little bit more time with it, but also keeping in mind that we want to move forward with this program quickly. But I also feel like we don't, we don't have in front of us, for instance, what are the average home prices right now in Palm Springs? I think they are about $750,000, but we don't have any of that data in front of us. It would be nice to see, like, what is the average cost of a condo? And not just average cost, but what are the HOA, average HOA fees? You know, what are all of the, what's all the data in the real estate community right now so that we can really say, do we want to keep it at 200 or do we want to lower it to 100? Would that be beneficial? Because I want this to be beneficial to the community.
Yes, so thank you for this report. And I agree, the community outreach and education is going to be key in this process. I mean, buying a home in the first place is complicated enough, and now you're dealing with a mortgage and a homebuyer's assistance program. So my recommendation is to go out to the community as soon as possible, to ask these, to get these questions, to explain it, because some of what Councilmember Garner is saying that may need to be tweaked will also come out of those community meetings. And I think that will be sort of helpful to do that. And I'm glad you spoke to the Realtors who are behind it, but now to the community and obviously Section 14 survivors and descendants, but the community at large, to our first-time homebuyers, because if you haven't gone through the process, it's complicated. And there's a lot of questions that will come up, you know, about selling it. What happens if you want to, you pass away and you get, can you give it to your children? Or things like that that may come up during the process. So all of these things are things that I think are hard to understand. I mean, and I also think that if this is successful, it then sets a model for us to justify additional funding down the line. This is, I don't know if we've done something like this before, if we have, if we, or, do you know if we have, Jay?
Yes, we've done self-help programs and first-time homebuyer programs in the past.
Have we done anything to this extent? Do you know?
I, yes, we're still, we're still servicing those loans that are out.
But it's been, it's been a while since we've been out to the community. So it's sort of like starting anew. So I think that's the key, is that, you know, I'd like to see this get going as fast as possible, but during this community outreach, we may discover that you need to come back to council with some tweaks on this, as well as getting some of the data to see that it's going to actually apply to a number of homes. I think the median prices of a single-family detached home is over $1 million, but I think a home is less than that. But I don't know how much, you would get some at $750,000, but then the question is, how much of a mortgage would they need to get and where are you actually looking at for a monthly outreach? So I think that would be helpful. And I just wanted to point something out because you mentioned this briefly upfront, but this is from the vacation rental tax, vacation rental TOT tax allocation that we have set aside. So we took a percentage of that to set aside for affordable housing and homebuyer assistance.
Correct.
Okay. So this will come up later, but that's one, that's one positive thing that's coming out of this. Also, when we, council did this last year, we agreed to a 10-year commitment, $10 million for this. The program of the county is five and then renewable, that if, for any reason, we don't renew it, we would look at something else to do it.
That's correct, Councilmember.
Okay. I think those are, the other question we had is, you either, you have to be a Palm Springs resident or a Section 14 survivor, but, so if somebody has actually moved out of the city because they couldn't afford to live here and wants to move back, they do not qualify?
If they're a Section 14 survivor, they would qualify.
But other ones, other people wouldn't?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could just add a couple other points. One of the reasons I think our partnership with the county was positive, they've got their system set up already. We could have tried to do some things internally, constructed some things, and we would have probably ended up spending a lot more in administrative costs and other things. So we, I know the staff felt this was a way to get more of the resources directly out to the community. I agree that there's a lot more messaging that we can do. I think we can develop some FAQs that we can take out in the community. Obviously, we have a lot of resources in the community that maybe the county doesn't quite have, and, you know, we can reach out in ways that they, they'll do their regular outreach, but there's additional things that I think we can do that could be very helpful. So we'll clearly keep that in mind.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. Have some follow-up questions based off of some of the public comments and just clarifications. So there's been a lot of comments on education and outreach, and to be clear, that's a city responsibility? Is there a part of that that's the county? Like, when we're talking education and outreach of the requirements, the follow-up, what does that really look like in terms of who is doing that work?
Primarily the city. However, the county would provide guidance and information on the technical aspects of the application and the process.
Okay. Thank you. And I agree, I think outreach to the community is really important, but as the city manager said, developing materials is going to be materials that are easy to understand, easy to follow, really simple 12 to 15 slide deck, like, very, very digestible information. People who do not have access to generational wealth need support and guidance on homeowner, the homeownership process, whether that's the county, state, or even at the city. And so those materials are also going to be really important to people, just be able to download a file and understand, does this work for my family? Can I forward this on to someone that it does work with? If it requires attending two to three meetings before you even understand if you qualify, we're not making it simple enough. Moreover, as has been mentioned, there are Section 14 survivors and descendants who don't live here. So if the onus, if the bulk of the information you get is in person, only available in person, that's not going to be enough. So really making sure that the materials that are available online are up to date and extremely helpful. Another question is the kind of, I appreciate the explanation as to why it was 200,000 that has been increased. The high cost of homes is quite burdensome here in the city for first-time homebuyers. That will go very quick to reach that million. So is it an annual, the window is open and you apply? If there's an impact list, does, you know, families six through 12 then get consideration in year two? Can you share a little bit about how you're thinking of managing that list of applications?
It would simply be a waitlist. So first come, first served after the priority periods. And I should note, the beginning of each fiscal year, there is a 60, a new 60-day priority period for the Section 14 survivors. So that rotates every year and comes up. And then after that, as was explained, the available funds for that year are allocated. And then for demand above and beyond that, it would have to be a waitlist.
So if my mom is applicant eight, year one, what does that mean year two? Is she automatically, a Section 14 survivor, I was application eight, year one, we did not make it in year one for consideration, where would they fall in year two? Would they have to reapply?
As we have it planned, that would be, she would be on the waitlist in priority.
But not a reapplication? Just?
Not a reapplication.
Okay. Okay. I probably have, I know I have some more questions, but I just do think we have to, our community deserves to have their hand held through this process. It's not just a matter of a check, it's making sure that they feel like they have real access to homeownership. And that's, 200,000 is very, it's great to get, don't get me wrong, but what people who have struggled with homeowner, homeownership or don't have access to, it's really making feel like there's someone to guide them through that process. And if you are someone who is potentially eligible for state closing cost assistance, which there are programs, we should be coordinating, if you're eligible for this, you could likely be eligible for that through, you know, some FHA closing cost loans, right? It's not just making sure that what we are implementing is done well, but we are really guiding them through everything they might be eligible for. So this, I recognize this is a new program, and there's going to be a lot of learning, but also our community members deserve a really good experience, too.
And I know we're just talking about this specific program here in Palm Springs. Like we mentioned earlier, we have a countywide program that anybody from the city of Palm Springs can also apply.
Right.
And buy a home outside of Palm Springs, too. So there's also that opportunity. We can also share those sort of resources at these community meetings that we're talking about potentially having in the future. So some people might miss an opportunity to buy a home here through this program, but then there might be other opportunities.
Right. Cross-referal programs. Yeah, absolutely. I would love to see that. Thank you.
Councilmember ready?
Yeah, to your, to your point, so how much is in the county program? The fund?
So currently, the county has two different programs. One funded with HUD funds, available for people at 80% of the area median income, and that offers up to $100,000. It's a countywide program. So typically-
Right, but how big is the fund? Like, this is a million?
So for that program, we allocate about half a million dollars every year.
For the whole county?
Yes, for the whole county. And it's a, but, so, and then we also have a state-funded program, and we allocate about $3 million to that program. And that program is available for 120% AMI households, and that's $100,000 countywide as well.
Okay. Well, a couple of questions. I mean, ideally, you know, this would be a much greater amount because it basically does four homes, four and a half homes a year approximately. But to the point, that, yeah, we just think that Councilmember Soto made, let's say, you open it up and you, first year, you open this program, you could have 25 people on the list. So in essence, that's going to take you for the whole 10 years if we get through the whole 10 years. So I think it's important for people to realize that they're going to have to apply in that first year when the program starts, and it's important to do that. Unless I'm missing something in this.
That's correct. The way the program is currently spelled out, there's other ways of doing it as well, lottery system, if you will. And so it's up to the city to decide as far as like, if that's something that you want to explore. Currently, the way the county program is structured, and it's on a first come, first served, and that's how we structured the program before you for consideration, but there's other ways of doing it as well.
But, so each, so then you could have, I mean, because you said, each year, you allow the 20% for Section 14 survivors. So you could get that full amount in the first year on a waiting list. But they could also qualify for non-Section 14 survivors as well?
Correct.
All right, but the key is to apply early.
Correct.
Because you may not be accepting applications in years two, three, four.
We'll still take the, we'll still take people in and out to the waiting list, no matter how long the waiting list grows. And like I said, we'll also share information about the countywide program as well and other available resources. as well and other available resources. But we won't, we'll take, if somebody wants to get on the waiting list, we won't deny them. And then hopefully, we're able to help them achieve homeownership, if not through this program, but other programs.
Okay, and a couple, quick question, with regard to the funding, and this, just some background occurred before I was on council. The, the set aside, housing set aside, which was roughly, I think, was 2.8 million that was in there this year, and that you do, is the million dollars included in that, or will that be a new million dollars? It's included, okay, so, so that's included, and then that's on an annual, annual rotation, depending upon how budget, if it's funded or not by council? Okay, great, thank you very much.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Councilmember Bernstein.
I'm sorry, just to follow up on David, and Councilmember Ready. You had said that they had to have their mortgage preapproval before they can apply, right?
So, for Section 14 survivors and descendants, they would have to first be approved through a process that we're setting up at the city. So then that way, once they do get approved and they're vetted, then they can get, they can move to the next step, which is getting prequalified for a first mortgage.
Okay, so, if you're prequalified for, that doesn't last forever, a prequalification, is that correct? So, if you're on the waiting list, that prequal, you know, for 10, it doesn't, that prequalification is not going to last for years. So then do you fall off the waiting list, or?
So, home buyers on the waiting list, all of them are not going to get prequalified for a first mortgage. It's only the families that, that, that first apply. So, at a certain point, families won't, won't have to run their credit and get prequalified with the, with the lender. It's only the first families that, that, where we have enough funding and that we identify, those are the families that are going to be moving on to the next step and getting prequalified with the lender, and then start looking for a home.
Okay, so then you can stay, and stay on the waiting list for 10 years?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Could I, could I ask, how much is in, currently in the housing fund, approximately?
I don't know, for finance directors available?
Well, and specifically, the questions might help you out, because that, that funds, I presume it funds this program, it funds the other affordable housing programs that you're doing. I was just trying to figure out, well, is that, is it fungible? Or is this earmarked separately?
Councilmember, our, our direction was 1 million a year from this fund for 10 years. And so, when you say fungible, I, I think that would be a council decision, but it is 1 million a year for 10 years for this particular program. Now, getting to the balance and what's currently in the fund, I, I can't say exactly, I mean, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how the accounting of the fund happens.
Well, like, for example, the affordable housing project later on the agenda, that has its funding coming from this fund. I presume that these are separate accounts within that fund?
Well, the timing of the funds becomes important, because what is available for these projects only comes in based on the TOT, and in for the affordable housing projects, it's 1 million dollars per year. So, how that is allocated is something I'm sure Ariel will go over, but it, these projects depend on the flow of the funds from the TOT Housing Fund Program to come through the door. Now, I think your question would be, and you know your question, obviously, is what's currently there? And that's where I don't know the current balance of the housing TOT fund. I've discussed it with the finance director, but, and we've planned alongside it, but I don't know the exact number, because...
Understand, all right, thank you.
...had to nail down.
All right, any thoughts? Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I, I would love to see us move forward with this program, but I would like to get a better understanding of the real estate market in Palm Springs, so that we can decide if we want to do 200,000 or make a change there. And I would also like to be able to just have this, like Mayor Protem said, really succinctly put into a short presentation, so that we can share that with the community, because I think right now, there's a lot of confusion. And so if we can have this come back at the next meeting with a very clear presentation about what all of this means, how it will work, and with that data from the real estate market, I think that would be really helpful for me and the public before we move forward, especially because if you're talking about this program being live potentially in January, that's great, but if, if we're entering the holiday season, and it, people might not be ready in January to apply for this if they don't understand the program. So, I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page with what's happening before, before it moves forward.
Is, is there any other, are there any other changes you would like to see when this comes back? The percentage reserved, the cap on 200,000, the cap on the home prices?
I, I would, I would like to see, you know, if not a community meeting, a small focus group, to get feedback and input, so then we understand how, how we can better explain the project. And, and do they see things that we're not seeing? So I think having, having some input from the community is certainly important, but I also don't want to rush it. If, if we, if we need, if we need more than two weeks, we've got to take more than two weeks, so we can do it right. And, and like Councilmember was saying, we're getting into the holidays, everybody's going to be focused on something else. So, if, if this starts mid-January, you know, I, I think if we have a better program and people understand it, it's going to be better served to our community.
Very good.
And even if in that, too, we can talk about partnership opportunities, having people kind of maybe do, you know, Lift to Rise has other kind of support services sometimes. And so, just, I'm not expecting that completely baked, but what that kind of cross-referral opportunities might look like, so that people have an idea how, where our program exists in the greater realm of first-time homebuyer support programs.
And Jay, you, you asked what else? I think a good question to this focus group, what's the preference? A waitlist or a lottery? We're going to go through 20 homes, 20 people on a list instantly. So, what do, what do the, what does the community feel is, you know, what's their choice? Okay, I'm hearing that we are, oh...
I have one more question. Am I, did I read this right, that there's like a 60-day window when someone is identified as eligible, right, to get a home, to qualify for a mortgage and all that? One other piece I'd be curious around, and the, the real estate community's feedback on, is that might not coincide when there's the most amount of demand on the market to be able to go out and find the most competitive home, right? So just because you qualify in February, but the homes that you might be eligible for all get on the market in April, I'm not a real estate agent, I'm making these months up, but that would be another piece, making sure we're not actually framing it completely opposite to what the market would, you know, what reality looks like.
Yeah, that's, absolutely, we can work with that. Typically, when you get prequalified, you get prequalified for a certain period, and then obviously, you have to renew that, and, because income changes and situation changes, your debt might go up. So, yeah, we can definitely work with that, and, and that'll be something that we would bring up at the community meeting.
I just want to make sure our launch date, right, if we're, if it is a waitlist period, doesn't kind of mess with that, so.
Yeah, and there's definitely peak seasons for home buying, I mean...
Yep, exactly.
Okay, so, do I understand we're asking just to table, table this item, and have it come back after we can get some more, some more feedback, but also be able to have a more concise explanation of the program, and, and maybe expand on what we have here based off of the questions that we've asked today?
Understood, and we will do that.
Okay, thank you. I think, I, I think you all have done a very good job on this. We just got to keep it in the oven a little bit longer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now, oh, would like a break, huh? It is 8 o'clock. Thank you for reminding me. All right, we will take a 10-minute break?
Please.
10-minute break is good, all right. 10-minute break is good. All right. Okay, welcome back. Before we get on to 2A, I'm going to invite Javier Enriquez from the AQMD to just give us a quick, brief update on an upcoming event. You were expecting to go at the end of the meeting, right?
Yes, sir. Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potente, council members, council and staff. My name is Javier Enriquez. I'm a senior public affairs specialist for South Coast Air Quality Management District. I have a couple of announcements to share on behalf of AQMD. The first is, South Coast AQMD is excited to share that more than 400,000 million is now available through Invest Clean Program, which aims to modernize the Southern California Goods Movement and Logistics Corridor by transitioning to zero emissions technologies. Funding is available to projects located in Los Angeles, Orange, San Bernardino, and Riverside Counties, including the Coachella Valley. Invest Clean includes four incentive programs. One, Charging Infrastructure Program. Two, Truck Replacement Program. Three, Battery Electric Cargo Handling Equipment Program. And four, Battery Electric Switcher Program. Application must be submitted online by 12:00 PM on November 28, 2025. For full details and instructions on how to apply, please visit the Invest Clean webpage at AQMD.gov/InvestClean. The second announcement is, South Coast Air Quality Management District will be hosting the upcoming Coachella Valley Dust Summit. This event will take place on Thursday, November 6, 2025, at 5:00 PM at the UC Riverside Palm Desert Center Auditorium, located in Palm Desert, California. The summit will also be available virtually for those who prefer to participate online. The Dust Summit will bring together local leaders, agencies, and community members to discuss regional air quality challenges, lessons learned from recent dust events, and collaborative efforts to improve health and environmental outcomes across Coachella Valley. We look forward to seeing broad participation across the region, both in person and online. I'll be providing this information and links to the clerk of the board. Thank you, Mayor, and council staff for your time.
Javier, the first programs you're talking about, are those consumer or municipal?
Consumer.
Oh, and where did we learn about those?
Those are primarily, again, for the corridor from the port into the IE, all the movements. Again, the four programs that I reference are, for example, the Charging Infrastructure Program.
But where do I learn about it if I want to apply?
It's Invest Clean on our webpage at AQMD.
Got it. Excellent. Thank you.
I'll be providing this information to the clerk.
Oh, beautiful. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next item is item 2A, to consider an application by Sunrise Lanai Community Association for historic district designation. How come these can't be on the consent agenda? Is it? Oh, it has to be a public hearing. Ah, okay. All right, you're on.
All right. Good evening, Mayor DeHart and members of City Council. For the record, Sarah Yoon, Historic Preservation Planner Officer for the City of Palm Springs. So the first item that we have in front of council tonight is HSPB 164, Historic District 12. This is a request for historic district designation of Desert Lanai Phase 1. The property here is located at the corner of East Tachiva Drive and South Sunrise Way. And the proposed boundaries for this district contains 22 individual units. The request for this designation was submitted by the owners' association with 82% of the current residents in support of the request. And the exact breakdown is 18 units express support, while four did not respond. As you can see in the aerial view on this slide, the proposed district has a total of six buildings that house the individual residential units, and a detached poolhouse building and a detached carport. When you take a moment to look at this overall site plan and layout, you'll observe that the vehicular access is restricted to the peripheries of the site on the north and the south. And the site to, and the location along North Sunrise shows the drop-off point. Here in this slide, you can see the drop-off area with the Port Cochea at the main entrance to the complex. The photograph to the right shows the current condition of the open courtyard space and the original swimming pool. And then here are some historic photographs showing Desert Lanai as it was completed in 1961. On the screen, you'll see the Port Cochea and the original detailings for the units and what they looked like historically. In order to be designated, the proposed area needs to be defined as part of the application for the district nomination. That boundary needs to be cleared, and I also identify the contributing resources within that boundary. The proposed district must meet criteria by exhibiting exceptional historical significance. And after close examination by the Historic Site Preservation Board of both the submitted report and the site visits that were coordinated with the homeowners' association, it was determined that the proposed site meets criteria in C, E, and F. This development exemplifies the rise of the middle class and an early form of condominium-style housing that introduced resort-style living. The Polynesian and Tiki-style architecture represents this time period well. And the design's association with the affluent and influential architect Charles Dubois was also a significant trait. And when it comes to the integrity of the site, its original location, the design, including the site design, remains intact. The form and massing of each structure remains unchanged from its original design. And some of the original wood detailing have been replaced over time, but maintains its character. HSPB determined that the necessary level of integrity to express the historical significance on the site is still retained. While there are more phases that were developed of Desert Lanai, the Desert Lanai complex, the one that is before you focuses on the first phase. This first phase has the best integrity, and it has a clear association with the architect Charles Dubois. And the application was initiated by the homeowners' association and followed an in-depth review of both the integrity and the historical findings. HSPB and staff recommend that city council designate Desert Lanai Phase 1 as a historic district for meeting these criteria for historical significance. I believe that the team is joining us virtually if you have any questions for them. And I can also address any questions that you may have of the staff report or the draft resolution that's in your packet today.
Thank you very much. It is a fun property. Do we have any questions for staff? Councilmember Bernstein.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. I do have a question. You say 82% of the homes supported it. Did the other ones vote against it or just not vote?
We were informed that they did not respond. So it wasn't that they did not support the application. They just did not respond.
Okay, so there's no reason that they didn't. The other question I have is that in here, we identified grass as a contributing feature. Is that right?
Yeah, the report does talk about the grass as part of its description. But when you look at the resolution, it was not called out specifically as a contributing feature, just the site design.
Okay, so in terms of sustainability, it's something that could be changed over time?
So if there are any changes or needs to address the turf that exists today, we would review the request and see what would be an appropriate alternative, if it goes down to that. But it would be reviewed as a certificate of appropriateness process.
Okay, so that becomes character-defining, but that's not necessary?
Currently, the sod or the grass itself wasn't defined as a character-defining feature. So there's flexibility to look at that if changes are required.
Okay, it says interior courtyard and communal lawn, overall ground curving of grass.
Yeah, I believe that's part of the description.
Yeah, that's under listed under character-defining features. On page 72. Unless I'm reading it wrong.
So in the resolution, the draft resolution, I'm not exactly sure what page.
This is just in the ARG thing?
Yes, I believe that's the description of the ARG report. So the character-defining features are set in the draft resolution under Section 3, where it says defining historic characteristics. So we have a list of character-defining features there. It does talk about the site design and just the cluster configuration, the lot common, lot area around the courtyard and the communal swimming pool. So it doesn't drill that far deep into the description related to the grass. But it has been described as part of the report.
Okay, okay. And then I asked you this already, because you don't know about this property. But in the report, it actually is interesting. It talks about them using condos as vacation rentals back to 1955, which would be before this.
Correct.
Potentially, this was a built as a vacation rental opportunity.
Yeah, I think, yeah, there were definitely, in Palm Springs, I think we're very ahead of our time in that regard.
Okay, thank you. No further questions. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for staff? All right, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers in the public hearing?
We have no speakers.
No speakers, and nobody's online, so the public hearing is now closed. Any other discussion or questions from council? At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion made by Jeffrey Bernstein. Do we have a second made by councilmember Gardner? And motion carries 5-0. Next item is 2B, to consider an application by Z List Revocable Trust for historic site designation of the Robinson Residence. May we have a staff report, please?
Of course. So we get a little bit of a taste of a district and a regular landmark designation. The second item, 2B, is for a single-family residence located at 999 North Potencio Road, HSPB number 169. The property, as you see in this aerial photograph, is nearly an acre lot. The home is designed by renowned architect A. Quincy Jones and Frederick Emmons. Many people may know of their works throughout the valley, such as Country Club Estates and Sunnylands and Rancho Mirage. After meeting with the project team about the proposed scope of work to renovate the property, the owners have decided to first pursue historic designation of this home, which is currently listed as a Class 3 eligible site. The design of the home has strong horizontal massing with articulation that create hierarchy in form. The sunflaps, the large expansive glazing, the use of steel columns all contribute to an aesthetic that is modern and quite simple. The slides shown here include five historic photographs in the Palm Springs Historical Society's archives, showing the construction process of the home and after it was completed in the mid-1950s. The construction photographs to the left show the surrounding context. And the photos to the right show the beautiful pavilion-like qualities of the home. And they highlight the elegance of the design pretty well. As a property seeking Class 1 status, the site should demonstrate historical significance by meeting the criteria listed here. HSPB evaluated the contents of the submitted historic resources report, conducted a site visit to determine that the home does meet criteria in 3 and 5. It's a wonderful example of the modernist movement in its design. And it is believed to be one of the only single-family homes, single-family home in Palm Springs by the architect A. Quincy Jones and Emmons. The site also retains a high level of integrity in these seven categories that support the historic significance of the site in its highest form. This home, brought before the board by the owners, is found to be, again, an exceptional property with historic merit, deserving Class 1 status. Recognized as the Robinson Residence after the first owners of the home, Jerome J. Robinson and Rose D. Robinson, HSPB recommends that city council designate this site as a historic Class 1 landmark site. The project team for this project as well, for this nomination, is also joining us virtually. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have in your packet regarding the report or the draft resolution.
Okay, do we have any questions of staff? Councilmember Bernstein, you have to have one.
We've had comment about the effect of the Mills Act, which this would then qualify for. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time?
The Mills Act, this would then qualify for?
Correct. So if you are a designated Class 1 or Class 2 site or a contributing building in a historic district, you do qualify to apply for the Mills Act.
And what is the impact of that to the city? Do we know?
Thank you for the question, Chris Adwin, your planning director. We haven't undertaken any feasibility analysis to understand the overall impact of the Mills Act program on the city's tax base. What we, I was going to say what we do know, but it's also unclear from our conversations with the county exactly the extent to which the rebate is applied to each individual property. It's dependent on a whole series of factors. It could be 30%. In some cases, we're aware of it being up to 70% discount on property tax. So there is certainly an impact over the long term as we approve more and more Mills Act. What I will say is that we paused the program in 2023, specifically to make sure that we were applying it in a way that met our objectives. And so one of the things that we looked at during that pause was ensuring that it was very clear in the resolutions for the Mills Act contracts and the contracts themselves that come before you, what the intended purpose of the property tax rebate would be, how it would be used for ongoing maintenance, repair, rehabilitation of these properties. So that is information that we are getting from those applicants and including in those contracts as they're coming before you. In addition, something that had been envisioned when we instituted the program but had been sort of administratively just hard to track and undertake was periodic reviews of how those money those monies are being spent. And so we have instituted in the fee schedule that you all adopted recently, a five-year inspection, so that we go out in five years and see how that Mills Act money is being used to make sure that the property is in good standing and has achieved sort of what we've agreed to through the contract. So those are the steps we've taken so far. I would also add that we are doing a review of our historic preservation ordinance through the zoning code update, and we are looking at other ways of improving the program to make sure that it is effective over the long term. And we can look through that process at getting additional clarity on the fiscal impact, but it would take some feasibility analysis, and we'd probably have to engage a team to look at that further.
Okay, my question was very short. It's not my fault that he had the most in-depth answer on this, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because I've asked this very question several times, and it's come back that the information I got back, or the answer is, it's not a significant amount. But what's interesting, and I don't know if the rest of the council got the article about the city recently that is curbing their designations because of the financial impact. So I think it is something that we should understand what that financial impact is. So we just have an idea of what we're doing every time we approve one of these. Yes, Mayor Protem.
And similar to that, as you're kind of going, updating the historical ordinance as you're updating the zoning code, like what is the percentage of, what's the ideal or target percentage of property that would, that are already designated, could be designated? What's the percentage that we are interested in keeping open? I guess, I mean, beyond the fiscal impact of the Mills Act here in the city, it's the other side, too, that I'm interested in being able to communicate to developers and other stakeholders on where and how it might be easier to develop a piece of property, whether that's residential or commercial, that being able to easily identify those and position ourselves to kind of communicate that clearly to people interested in developing and investing in our city.
Absolutely, and it's certainly something we're looking at in terms of easing that process and being much clearer on how it applies. I'll keep it short.
Okay, do we, thank you. Any other questions? All right, do we have any public comment?
We have no public commenters.
No public comment, public hearings closed. At this time, entertain a motion to accept staff recommendation made by Jeffrey Bernstein, seconded by councilmember Ready. Motion carries five zero. Next item is item two C to consider resolution a necessity of the city council for acquisition by eminent domain of a temporary construction easement. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I'll be presenting this item with the assistance of Joel Montalvo, our city engineer, and Greg Snar from Besteston Krieger, one of our eminent domain attorneys. The item before you is a public hearing that will allow the city council to consider acquiring by eminent domain a temporary construction easement interest in a portion of real property identified as S R parcel number six-seven-eight-two-one-zero-zero-four-one, owned by Marwan Jaiswari, for the city's Ramone Road Bridge widening project. In August of two thousand nineteen, the city acquired a temporary construction easement from the property owner. However, that TCE expired June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, without the city being able to utilize that temporary construction easement or being able to construct the project. Therefore, the city needs to acquire a new temporary construction easement. So the city and its representatives reached out to the property owner to inquire about acquiring that temporary construction easement. After meeting and talking to the property owner several times, the property owner has indicated that they are not willing to negotiate any further regarding the acquisition of this property interest until additional compensation is negotiated. Obviously, as in previous cases where the city council has considered these resolutions of necessity, efforts will continue to negotiate with the property owner in order to acquire the property interests. However, in order to keep the project going and on schedule, staff in the city attorney's office is recommending the city council conduct this public hearing and adopt the attached resolution of necessity. By way of background, the city did obtain an appraisal from Beth Firestone, as well as Stephanie Kavanaugh, to establish the fair market value of the property interest. That offer was made to the property owner earlier this year in January. In addition, a notice of the resolution necessity hearing that is scheduled for tonight has been mailed to the property owner. Under California's eminent domain law, the city council is required to adopt four findings in order to authorize the filing of an eminent domain action. The first finding is that the public interest and necessity require the proposed property. The second finding is that the project has been planned and located in a manner most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. The third finding is that the real property to be acquired is necessary for the project. And the fourth finding is that the offer of just compensation has been made to the property owner. As I mentioned, a notice of the hearing was mailed to the property owner on September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five by first-class mail. In terms of the property that sought to be acquired, the city is seeking to acquire an L-shaped temporary construction easement in the property along Ramone Road and Landau Boulevard, ranging from five to ten feet in width and totaling approximately one thousand two hundred and twenty, twenty-eight square feet, for a duration of sixty months, five years. In terms of the four findings that the city council is required to make, city staff and the city attorney's office believe that those findings can be made. With regard to the first finding, that the public interest and necessity require the proposed project, we would note that the proposed project will result in the widening of Ramone Road from a four-lane arterial to a six-lane arterial between San Luis Rey Drive and Landau Boulevard, including the widening and seismic retrofitting of the bridge and the road. This project will result in a gap closure by providing a continuous six-lane arterial that will correct a bottleneck that occurs due to the narrowing of lanes across the bridge. This project will enhance traffic flows and safety and augment pedestrian and bicycle access. With regard to the second finding, that the project is planned to locate it in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, the project has been designed to minimize property impacts as it was in two thousand nineteen. With regard to the third finding, that the real property to be acquired is necessary for the proposed project, we would note that the subject temporary construction easement lies in the path of the project area, and city staff has worked with our consultants to ensure that no more property is being acquired from this property owner than is absolutely necessary. And then finally, with regard to the final finding, that the offer of just compensation has been made, the city mailed an offer to the property owner on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It should be noted that those are the only four findings that the city council is required to make. City councils and other legislative bodies are sometimes tempted to start talking about the actual amount of just compensation. That issue is not properly before the city council, although you obviously may be curious about that. That is something that is left really to the court system to determine. So I would encourage the council to not really focus too much on that particular issue. That concludes my staff recommendation. As I indicated, our city engineer is available to answer some of the technical questions, as well as my colleague, Mr. Snar, to answer any of the more specific eminent domain questions.
Okay, do we have any questions, councilmembers? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Publics invited to speak on this matter for up to two minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
No public speakers.
And nobody online? Okay.
Nobody online.
Public hearing is now closed. Are there any other discussions, comments, questions of city council? Councilmember Gardner.
Okay, no, thank you. I just wanted to, you know, clarify, so this is for a temporary construction easement during this road widening project, and this project has been in the works for a long time. So this is, we're moving forward with this so that we can get the project started and hopefully finish in a timely manner, and that sums it up, right? Okay, so I just, I support moving forward with this and, you know, trust the city attorney's office to move forward with all of the just compensation as needed. But I just wanted to clarify just very quickly for the public that it's, this is temporary and necessary in order to complete the project.
Any other comment? But I can ask a, so a question, so this action, staff recommendation, it is in parallel to ongoing negotiation with the property owner?
Absolutely. Although this action, if taken by the council, will result in the city attorney in our office filing the action in court, we are completely open to and would continue to talk to, communicate and negotiate with the property owner with regard to compensation and whatnot.
So an agreement may come through this negotiation that is separate from this other action that's taking place that won't have any impact on this negotiation if it is accepted?
Correct, and in those negotiations, if they're successful, that would result in us not having to go forward any further with the court action.
Yeah, okay. Okay, this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept staff recommendation made by councilmember Gardner, seconded by Mayor Protem. Motion passes five zero. Okay, next item is item, oh my goodness, Kenny, you're up. The people watching on TV are going to be so happy about this because you've been on camera the whole night. You've been in the hot seat, and you've been very good. You haven't been making faces or anything, so good job. Okay, next, item three A, which is an introduction of ordinance regarding the annual cap on number of vacation rentals that can occur on residential property within the city of Palm Springs. May we please have a staff report?
Good evening, council. Veronica Goodheart, Director of Special Program Compliance. This agenda item provides council the opportunity to consider and conduct a first reading of an ordinance that removes the impending reduction of annual contracts for vacation rental properties. Additionally, it provides council with an opportunity to provide staff direction based on the recommendations received from the Administrative Appeals Board and Vron, Vacation Rentals and Owners of Palm Springs. Briefly, I would like to present an overview of the vacation rental permits that are currently held in the city. As of today, we have two thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven permits. The all-time high, the peak that we experienced in permits, was in June, two thousand twenty-four. At that time, we had two thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven. And in two thousand twenty-two, when the ordinance was revised, we had two thousand two hundred and fifty-six. So while we did hit that peak, we are now seeing the industry starting to revert back to the pre-pandemic days, and we are seeing that decrease, and it continues to trend down. With regard to contract usage, here is an overview. This is our two thousand twenty-four data. There were a total of forty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight contract summaries that were submitted by two thousand five hundred and seventy properties. The average number of contracts utilized was between nine and twelve, and eight point four percent of all homes used between thirty-three and thirty-six contracts. With regard to two thousand twenty-four, the properties that were grandfathered in and had the ability to rent thirty-six times, there were a total of forty thousand eight hundred and forty-four. Again, it was the nine to twelve that was the average there with the nine percent, almost just shy of ten percent of the thirty-three to thirty-six. In comparison to the new permittees, which was only two hundred and twenty-nine, there were, hold permits were issued after the ordinance revision, there were three thousand five hundred and eleven contracts submitted, with their average number of contracts per permit holder being one to three, and approximately ten percent using the twenty-five to twenty-six We also included vacation rental, the junior vacation rental permits, just so you can have an idea of how they're doing. You will see that there are a few that are over the six. That is just because there are some errors sometimes in inputting. We do review them all to ensure that they are within their permit parameters, but they do show up when we run the stats because they were entered incorrectly, and we have to manually remove them later. In comparison, comparing twenty-three versus two thousand twenty-four for the contracts for the grandfathered properties, you'll see that it is consistently the same. This year, there was an increase in the number of permits who rented between thirty-three and thirty-six, but it wasn't a significant increase. Again, you'll see that it's spread out pretty evenly across the board, the numbers used. Also included in the revision to the ordinance in two thousand seventy-five was that the use of event homes would be treated as a contract. That was not a work group recommendation or staff recommendation, rather, it was a council directive, and the rationale behind it was to lessen the impact that event homes had on the community. If each event home could rent up to thirty-six times in addition to unlimited event homes, that's what they were trying to lessen the impact of. We did review the event homes that have short-term rental permits. There's a total of fifteen, and the graph displays how many contracts submitted, with only one property submitting twenty-six, the rest were significantly lower. With regard to the administrative, administrative review board's recommendation, we did meet with them in August, and we went through all of their recommendations. Many of their recommendations can and will be implemented by policy changes, and the others, we could look forward to modifying in the future, most likely two thousand twenty-six. Vron presented a total of thirteen recommendations for consideration to the city. Staff has reviewed, and we agree that all the items that are related to consistency and clarity should be adopted. And with regard to those that would change the actual regulations, we do recommend having more time to get more input from stakeholders in the community, and we could bring those back again in two thousand twenty-six. And I'm available for any questions you have regarding this item.
Excellent. Questions from city council? I think the slide presentation was very good, so thank you. I could even understand it, so perfect. No questions? Okay, councilmember Bernstein.
Okay, so you divided up the breaks in your thing from thirty-three to thirty-six within nine, do you have the data for twenty-six to thirty-six, which is what we're considering now?
Yes, so. For the grandfathered properties between the twenty-six to thirty-six, we're looking at approximately four hundred and fifty permits that were submitted in that range, or four hundred and fifty contracts that were submitted within that range.
Okay, and do we know you have four hundred, forty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight contract summaries submitted in two thousand twenty-four? Do we know how that compares to the last few years?
They are, all are consistency the same. We, let me pull that for you one moment. So in two thousand twenty-three, there was approximately two thousand less total submitted.
Less than now?
Yes.
Do we know how that equates to number of days?
No, we don't track that. So we do not track that in our normal, we just look at the number of contracts submitted as opposed to the actual days. So we don't know if it's a two-day stay versus a five-day stay. We wouldn't have that available.
Okay, what we do know is that from last year to this year, the drop in the number of permits has gone down five percent.
Correct.
Okay, and you have the usage by homes from, I guess you did, twenty-three, twenty-four, but you don't have that going back farther?
We could, we did have a change in software, so it is more difficult to obtain those numbers from prior years. It takes some more staff time, and we are currently short-staffed due to one of our members who does have all our stat keeping being on vacation.
Okay, you know, one of the You know, one of the things, I just want to mention, this is not you.
How long's that vacation?
This is, I mean, this is great. I did start asking for this data in June when we brought the agenda back, and, you know, what I would say to staff and city manager, this needs to get out there. We can't do this the day of the, of the agenda, of the council meeting. I mean, this is data that the community is interested in, and we're using it to make important decisions, and so it's important to get this data out there because vacation rentals have typically, you know, they've all been hot buttons in our city, and so when we're making any kind of change, data and presentations needs to be out at least when the agenda's put out, if not much earlier. And so I think we get into sometimes some of our business meetings where we talk about a lot of the trends in vacation rentals, and it's very insular, and most of the public doesn't know what's going on. So we're very lucky because we haven't had lots of complaints. We know that our TOT in vacation rentals has dropped, but we're not sure how that relates to saturation in homes. And so there's more in-depth study that I think we need to make sure gets out there because the community is going to be upset. Now, there's another question, and I think another to my council members, we, when we raise this to come back, apparently we have to be much clearer to staff in what we're actually asking for. Because of my understanding was the only, the only thing that we were really focusing on was the impending drop from 36 to 26 rentals for legacy homes. In here, we've now also proposed the increase from 26 to 36 for the post-22 homes, which, that is in the staff report, right?
Correct.
And so I think we're getting, that would be a big deal in the community because that is now, right now, things are okay right now where they're at. We don't get a lot of complaints. We know that, we know the market is trending downwards in terms of saturation. I don't know whether it's a bubble burst or correction. I think it's probably better for the market and, because some of the, some of the people who entered the market later are probably driving prices down and probably not as experienced players. So allowing them up 26 to 36 would require a whole lot of community input, and I can guarantee you it would be very heated debate. So this is, I know this is what staff is recommending, but just in dealing with the community, it's, it's a concern. So I just wanted to raise that. We know we've had the questions about, so the, the question has come up with rental, event homes. Does a vent home that is rented as a vacation rental that has an event during that period count as two contracts or one?
Just one.
As just one. Is that clear in this contract, do you think, in this ordinance?
It could be clearer.
Okay. Because we have an event home ordinance that's separate.
Correct.
And so a suggestion I would have, and I don't know if we want to do this now, but I can do it at the end of the meeting, is that we look at the event home ordinance, coming back to council for review, because I think there's other issues they have brought up, like the, a period for permits, whether we can reduce that from 60 to 30. And I don't know if that's possible, but that's something that could be discussed that's not even addressed really in here.
Our planning department oversees event houses, so they would have better information with regard to the permitting process.
Okay. So that, that's something we can discuss as council, I guess at the end of the meeting, whether that comes back. And do we know how our citations have gone to vacation rentals over the last few years, why that's trended?
Yes. And so I did, our co-compliance supervisor is here, and he does have stats available. If you would like, he can go over that briefly with you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, are you asking for stats on event houses?
No, no, I'm sorry, vacation rentals.
Vacation, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I apologize, yeah. Vacation rental citations over the last few years, how that's trended.
Good evening, council. My name is Mitch Nappan. I'm the city's co-compliance supervisor, and I oversee our city's various enforcement programs. So yeah, looking at total citation data going back three years, so from 2023 into 2024, and then year-to-date 2025, we've generally seen a trend down. So in 2023, overall, we had 472 total citations, so that's both active disturbances as well as administrative citations, things like unregistered vacation rentals, things like failing to submit contract summaries, things like, you know, advertising violations. So both administratively from homeowners or their authorized agents, as well as nuisances or disturbances caused by those renters. In 2024, that reduced down to 245 total citations that were issued. And then year-to-date so far, that trend continues to move down, where we're at year-to-date 170 total. And then, you know, again, further broken down, when it comes to the, the active disturbances, things that are attributable to the guests who are actually staying in the properties on a short-term basis, you know, from 2023, that was, you know, we had 71 citations that were issued for, specifically for music. Again, that's for music that was heard beyond the property line. That's our most common active disturbance call at a vacation rental property. We had 29 citations that were issued for vehicles that exceeded the permitted limit, and then we had two that were issued for refusing waste that was left in public view that was ultimately not corrected or cured. In 2024, that reduced down to 56 that were issued for music, 19 for vehicles that exceeded the permitted limit, and two for trash, so the trash kind of stayed flat. And then year-to-date so far, we've had 60 that were issued for music, so that ticked up a little bit. We've had three for vehicles that exceeded the permitted limit, and then also, we've also issued two for, related to the trash that was left in public view. And the citations for trash, again, that is the, while it is a violation, it is one of the only ones that's curable within our ordinance. So when there, when there is a call for that disturbance, if it is observed as a violation, we do reach out to the local contact. They have an opportunity to correct it within 60 minutes, and if so, citation's not issued. And so in these instances where these citations were issued, those attempts were made, and they were ultimately not cured. And then again, when it comes to unregistered rentals and some of the administrative, those account for the other citations that were within those ones.
And you don't go back to 22, right? Did you have 23 here?
I mean, we do track that. I didn't prepare that data for tonight's meeting.
I think some of, the reason why some of this might be interesting, because 22 is when this ordinance was updated, and so there was obviously a lot of concern and issues then. And so part of what I'm trying to get at here is that I think we had a great ordinance update in 2018. I think 2022, we addressed a whole lot of it, and I think between the ordinance and code compliance and market self-monitoring, we've seen things have calmed down and improved significantly in the last few years. So, and I thank you for all this data. It's really terrific, and it's, I think even more data is useful just for educating. I want to ask specifically, because you mentioned about the unlicensed, AAB has asked if we can require that the listing service, listing services, Airbnb, et cetera, make sure they get a permit before they post a listing? Can we put that in the ordinance?
Yes, we can, and we actually now have additional state law that was recently passed and signed by the governor this October, which provides cities greater ability to obtain that information and to have the cities' regulations enforced by platforms such as Airbnb and BRBO. So it's SB 346, and so we do have that tool, so we can implement that.
And to clarify, that's not on the agenda tonight, but if the council gives direction to staff in the city attorney's office, we can draft that and bring it back.
Well, that's one of the AAB recommendations, which we had, was included in the report here.
For discussion and direction, yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So again, this is one that came back in June. This is one of the things I thought we were going to do, so I would recommend that seems, and I think the industry itself is happy to do it. It's basically just stopping people who don't have permits from listing on, on the, on the Airbnb, et cetera, which is helpful for us as a city, it's helpful for the vacation rentals so that we don't, they don't get bad players out there, and it's also probably helpful for people unknowingly, some of these people have said they unknowingly advertise or don't know the rules, so I don't know whether it's always true, but at least this would help monitor it. I mean, those are my, my major questions. I know there was comments about changing the notice in the homes. I don't think we should change the notice in the homes. There was question about evacuees and emergencies, which I'm perfectly open to, but I think that should be handled on a case-by-case basis. Maintaining the contracts for only 24 hours, I don't really think is enough, but four years may be too much, so I don't know if there's a median. And generally, what I think is what we've seen is the market's going through a correction on its own. And so the idea really, what I was looking at today was maintaining the 36 for legacy homes, because, and there's justification, when people bought these homes, they may have thought that this is what they could do. I understand that we have secondary and ancillary use issues, but the market, the industry seems to be working right now. And I actually think in terms of saturation, the legacy home staying on and doing okay would help encourage some of the more Johnny-come-latelys who thought they were going to make a fortune and realizing that they're not, to exit the market, as we started to see already with a 5% drop. And I think that would benefit the community to have fewer homes doing it well and other homes going to either full-time rentals or sale. And I think that would be, that will continue to happen, probably as interest rates drop, we may see that would move forward, although our housing prices are still very high. But that would be my recommendation, and then this also keeps the event homes where they're at right now, at the 36 for the legacy ones, and then we address the, mention later, we can ask later to address the event homes. And this, and then over the next year, you can look at a lot of these more in-depth ones, which having community input or stakeholder input, or if you think a working group is necessary, but that way we are stabilizing the market based upon the information we have now.
But make it clear for me, you're, are you saying that we should continue to count event homes' use as a contract?
Right now, this would be as it's currently standing.
Yeah.
And that's how, that's what they're doing, and that's what's happening. I know the event home people have said they don't want it to, but as you've seen from the numbers, it doesn't look like we're really exceeding the total 36 now. What they don't want to do is drop to 26, is what I have heard mainly is the main concern. So if things stay the way they are now, and we can address the event homes in the full ordinance, I think that would be a smart way to do it. And basically, we're just leaving everything as it is now, except that we're just removing that drop from 36 to 26 in January. And that, that doesn't change things as they are now. I've talked to people who don't like vacation rentals, and they're sort, they, they understand that this is right, okay right now. They would not be happy if we increased the 26 ones to 36 without more stakeholder input. And I think that might be a smooth way to do this now and create stability for the industry. And then also, over the next year, we're going to see what happens with interest rates, with more permits dropping, and, and quite honestly, the code compliance is doing such a good job that, you know, what I hear mostly is just saturation, it's not complaints about the homes. And I think we'll start to see that go down more.
Other questions? Okay. Question? Yep, Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much for this data. It's really helpful. Something stood to me when you were speaking about 2024. So there were, at its peak, you mentioned in June 24, a little over 2,900 permits, right?
Correct.
And then 2024 overall, about a little over 2,500 permits had contracts, correct?
Correct.
So it's about 12% had zero contracts.
So our contract submission tool, there are, we do often find that people do not utilize it. So what we can provide to you is what is submitted. We are actively, and our code compliance team does an amazing job of doing investigations and operational audits for the properties who do not submit contract summaries. So there are some properties who do not submit their summaries, so we can't provide that, you know, a complete snapshot. I'm certain there are homes who probably have not rented, but I can't say that's accurate for the entire numbers that didn't submit.
It'd be a guess, would it be like 5% of that 12, like 2%?
I would say 5%.
Okay. Okay. Because I think when we think of saturation, right, oftentimes people are looking at the number of permits that we have in the city, the number of permits allowed in a given neighborhood. And so if we have 12% of them, maybe 5, maybe 7% that are actually not having any contracts, I think it needs to be part of our kind of estimation that it's not the, you know, we might have those contracts, but they're, it's not giving that neighborhood disruption. And so it'd be helpful to know, like, if, if that's more true in certain neighborhoods versus others, and just have some idea of like how real or squishy that 12% is. A couple other questions. So there, there was really just two on the events, there were only just two homes that had double-digit events, right?
Correct.
Do you roughly know if those are legacy homes or new contracts?
They are legacy homes. So the highest numbers submitted were by the Frank Sinatra estate.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And given that this event portion was not part of the original recommendation and kind of the stakeholder engagement, and there's going to be a complete review of the events ordinance overall, I mean, is it, is it cleaner to keep them separate, our STR ordinance and our events? Or can you talk us through a little bit of the administrative kind of confusion on your part to just be able to manage, kind of compile them together for certain permits and what that process is like when you're working with permit owners?
From a staff point of view, it would be best to keep them separate, to keep event homes housed in their own ordinance and have them live in their own space. We do have several event homes, though, that do also have that short-term rental permit. So if for any short-term stay, they're subject to the vacation rental ordinance, and we can maintain it that way, but for the actual, like, one-day events, you know, that should be overseen in their ordinance.
Mm-hmm. I thought I, and I can't remember if it was on a slide or in the packet, but there was a number I read somewhere in the last 24 hours of how many STR, how many contracts were also an event that kind of included those nights? Do you?
The ones in, that are on the PowerPoint presentation, these all were just, we took the total number of events, and we compared them against the actual submitted contracts through our, and we compared it planning, and they couldn't differentiate between how many had overnight stay versus how many were just a one-day event.
And this, this on slide eight doesn't make that distinction, right?
No, it does not.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So even if, okay, so some of these might not have any night stays associated with them, and some of them might, and we just don't know yet.
And we could dive deeper into that when we bring back the, when the event house ordinance comes back, we can provide that to be included in that report.
Yeah. Because it does seem like they're, kind of the event party experience is its own distinct market than our short-term rental market, and we want to make sure that both are regulated appropriately, and for the very few instances where it's both, then there's two policies to apply, but to do them together seems confusing for me. So I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, but that'd be one proposal. And then separately, around the 36 versus 26, can you share a little bit about how the, the concentration of legacy permits versus newer permits, and what that kind of looks like a little bit in the city?
That's a little difficult because they're widespread throughout the city. There are certain neighborhoods, and you can, if you look at the different saturation weights on the city's website, we do list them. There are like the movie colony, trying to think, racket club. There are certain areas, desert park estates, where we have a higher concentration. In fact, they're over the 20% cap. When we started implementing the caps, we saw some of the neighborhoods that traditionally weren't hubs for vacation rentals starting to have an uptick, and that's where we continue to see the uptick is those neighborhoods. So again, it's very difficult because they are so widespread. So again, it's very difficult because they are so widespread. But we do have that available on, where we can look at the different neighborhoods. And you can see, and the ones that have reached that 20% limit, those are all legacy homes.
Mm-hmm, great, great.
The neighborhoods.
Correct.
Yeah, I would be, you know, I would hope that we can make this, I think we've done a really good job of having this be a well-regulated part of the Palm Springs tourism experience. You know, I have a, I have a lot of family who come to visit, and they come in groups, and short-term rentals are really helpful for that. I hear a lot that when people come as a family, they come and stay in short-term rentals. And so, and that it's, that there's a very clear process, and owners take it very seriously compared to other cities where people might be visiting. And so I think you've done an incredible job of managing all these, like, thousands of, of permits that we have across the city, and really kind of elevating that experience for our tourists. So I would definitely propose keeping, giving this important stakeholders who are so crucial to our tourist experience, that stability, to be able to plan, and also kind of recognize that they're distinct from our events. So, thanks.
Councilmember Ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Veronica, this was very good information. It's, the trends are interesting. I mean, it does show that things are working. I'm curious, and maybe, I don't know if you know this, but like, so for example, on the, the 71 house music in '23, and then it went down to 56, and then 60. I was just curious, do you keep that by neighborhoods? Is that broken up by neighborhoods at all?
No, we can easily do that.
I was just curious, like, is it, you know, Tennis Club, Deepwell? It'd be curious to know if there's concentrated areas, or if that's just pretty much spread. Just, just a question for future discussion.
Okay.
But I had a, have a couple of questions. It's, just to clarify, so are the Vron recommendations are not included in the draft this evening, or they are included?
They're not in the ordinance, no.
Okay, so that's more discussion?
Correct.
Okay. The, the other question I had was, was, was this at all shared, like, at the 1PS meeting with the neighborhoods, so they were aware? Because we've always had this partnership with the neighborhoods on these. Do you know if this was shared, if they're aware of it, if they had any comments?
I am not aware.
No? So it could be, ultimately. All right, because we, you know, we've had a, part of the strength of this is the neighborhood's been on board with what we've done, and it's made it easier. So that's for going forward. The other thing was, was there an economic analysis done, I presume, you know, what this is going to do for TOT, the economy? Vron may have actually done that?
Yes, they did.
And, and do we have any of that, or do we have, it's not part of the staff report?
It's not part of the staff report. There, we didn't have any way of fact-checking it, because we don't have that day, the day, daily average day. So we, we couldn't verify it. So we did not include it, but we can present that, we can provide that in the future.
Well, is there, is there a summary of it that we could get maybe from someone representing Vron?
I, I have it with me.
Okay.
The economic study. So the economic study projected that it would result, if the contracts were reduced, in a 16.9 decrease in visitor spending, a loss of 119 jobs, and a reduction in $5.3 million in wages and salaries, and a 1.0 million TOT revenue reduction.
That's if it goes back to the 20?
Correct, if it's reduced.
20, okay. And I did, I was curious, when I heard a comment, we still have a requirement that vacation rental permittees have to list their license on all their advertisements. Is that still in effect?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so even on VBRO?
Yes.
Okay, so that's how we know if they're legitimate or not?
Yes, correct.
Because that still requirement is still there? Okay, great, that's good, thank you. And, and then I was just wondering, this, I think what, Councilmember Bernstein, what you're suggesting is that it just remain as it is for the, the original, that they're the only ones that go down, or stay, go up, that gets removed. But for the new permittees, they stay at the lower level?
Yeah, well, the new permittees, they knew that, that's what they were getting when they got their permit. The, the, the other, the existing ones don't go up, they just, they stay, they're, they're, the 36 does not drop.
Right, okay.
And just one more thing to clarify, that they, in the advertising, we require the people to do it, but we don't require Airbnb to check it. And that's what I was suggesting.
Right, but we can cite them if it's not on Airbnb. That was the point of it.
Correct.
That's what, that's what Administrative Appeals does, and that's what all of their things are. But if we, if we, if we require Airbnb, Airbnb will not require it unless it's in our ordinance. And we, and if we put it in our ordinance, then they now do the work of our code compliance, basically.
All right.
And I don't know if I said that correctly, but sort of.
It would, the, we could now implement a regulation. And the new legislation that passed by the state also gives us the ability to cite VRBO and Airbnb for failure to do so. So we put greater responsibility on them as well.
So you, you could see a scenario where, you know, I'm just thinking through this, you know, having this discussion with 1PS and the groups, in the end, it may be, you know, things are working so good that, you know, they all, there may be a consensus, they're fine with everyone going to a higher number. But I think that comes after some discussion with them. But I think so right now, what's in the ordinance is, is the recommended that everyone goes, and you would be making an amendment to modify that, I think is what I'm hearing.
That we, that instead of dropping to 26, the legacy say it 36.
And 26 stays at 26.
And the 26 stays at 26.
Yes.
And I think the mayor and I did raise this at 1PS, that this is what the, we were going to address. This is before I started the staff report. So we never talked about raising the 26 to 36 with 1PS at all.
So maybe somewhere down the road, if 1PS is on board with it, and there seems to be consensus, we could revisit it again. But since we haven't had the opportunity...
Yeah, not even 10% of the 26s used what they are able to use, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Anything, yes, Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. Appreciate all of this information. Yeah, it, when I asked for this, I, I, it was my intention that we would look at the, this fully, so that we could address everything all at once and not have to come back. But it is what it is. So I agree with, with everyone about the legacy contracts versus the, the 26, the difference in the legacy contracts and the new contracts. But then Vron did have a list of, of things that they put forward, and a lot of them were, were just cleaning up the ordinance and clarity, that I think is, is important. But if we're not going to be discussing it right now, I'd like at least to give feedback on what I think, so that we can bring it back. So the, there's a lot about owner, about vehicles. For instance, owner vehicles on property, not counting towards the total vehicle count, which makes sense. And the same thing with allowing two additional vehicles during the daytime hours, because it's, it's, it's true, it makes it really difficult if you can't have, if you're allowed a guest, but then there's no place for the guest to park.
And we agreed with that. That was one of the ones we agreed with.
Oh, okay, great. Because I, yeah, I think that, that, these are just things that make things easier for everyone.
Correct.
Because I know that, then you have people just moving their cars down the street, and it doesn't even help anything, right? It's better to understand where things are. The same thing with, you know, collecting all of the vehicle license plate numbers. If it's not really useful to code enforcement, then there's not necessarily a need there. And then I agree with Councilmember Bernstein in terms of the guest IDs. Four years is a really long time. Does it need to be 24 hours? Maybe, maybe not, maybe, maybe it's a week, but four years is a long time. The same thing, and this is the trash can thing. I think this has been brought up so many times, and I would really like to see this changed, because we require all vacation rentals to pay for the walk-up service. So if the trash cans are not put inside, that's the fault of the, it's, it's not the vacation rental people, it's the, the trash service. So I mean, I guess, I guess someone could pull them out unnecessarily, but more often than not, it's just an error by the trash, by, who's our trash? Palm Springs disposal? Palm Springs disposal rather than, anyway, it just, it just seems like something that we end up getting a lot of comments about, because there's confusion over who actually left the trash out. And it's really a very small thing. So I would like to see us address that in some way. And then, like, things like this, where there, where there's the maintenance, like, there's different maintenance and repair requirements for the vacation rentals than residents.
And we agreed to have that, yeah. So we did go, we did, if you'd like, we can go, I can go through the 13, and with what we agreed and what we don't agree, might make it easier to review those.
I, I mean, but would they still all have to come back, right?
They would, but then you could know what we can add.
Sure, I mean, that would be helpful, yeah. If you can tell us what, what you agree on, and what you would like more, more feedback on, that would be helpful.
Okay. So we went through the 13 recommendations, and we agreed with the majority of them.
So Veronica, where are you working? So I can look at the same thing, and we can cross off.
It's in the attachment. It is the...
B?
Let me make sure I have the right attachment number.
If we go, yeah, B?
B.
Yes, attachment B.
Okay, so if we can go one down, all the way down the list, and if you, if you all are agreeing to it, and it makes, it's administratively an easy thing, let's, let's hear that, and then...
So it's page 13 of the staff report?
Page 13, thank you.
So the first item, which was to, for the consistent definitions and expected response times, we do agree. With regard to the parking requirements, we did, we do agree with regard to the day parking, adding the additional spots. We do not agree with removing the parking strike, though. So if they receive a...
Hold on, what number are you at?
Oh, that's the second one, parking, I apologize. So, and...
No, first is reference number 57, existing ordinance, local contact person.
So these were all related. They were all to have them match consistency and clarity. So it had to do with the local contact person responding by phone.
Okay, so you support that?
Yes.
Okay.
Number 167, we support as well.
So 151 and 152, you support?
Yes.
Okay.
167, we support. The 143 is the parking, the operation center for parking. And we do agree with the additional vehicles for daytime occupancy. We did not agree with the, removing it as a strike, because it is a violation. And one of the things that has made our ordinance work is that it is strict, so every site counts as that. With regard to the vehicle owner stored on property, the only issue that was pointed out was, you know, how do we identify the owner vehicle? Because one thing that we have found, and Mitch can also speak to this, is when we respond, and people are asked questions, all of a sudden, they don't know. Or, oh, it belongs to the owner, or an owner said I could do this. So we would have to have, we would have to know what vehicle is the owner's vehicle that's stored there. So we would just need to look at that a little more, how we could achieve that in a way that's easy for code to identify that when they respond.
So wasn't it just in, in the driveway?
Pardon?
How many vehicles in the driveway?
Stored on property.
On pro, well, yes, in the driveway or on the street. Sometimes the owners don't always keep theirs in the garage, they have them on their driveway or car.
Just, just to clarify, but, but people can park on the street. So this, this vehicle requirement was only for in the driveway?
You have to park in the driveway.
You have to park in the driveway, right.
Yes. So, so, okay, so this happened to me, because I have friends that come in for an annual trip, and we do a vacation rental. And the owner, in, in the information we were given, they, they told us that the owner's car did not count towards our vehicle count, which I'm now learning, right now, that's not true. So it, and it was confusing. And if we, we did not get a citation, but had we gotten a citation, that would have been very frustrating, because that was not clear. So I do think that if you have a vacation rental owner who's storing their vehicle on the property, and then you have more, you have guests that each have a vehicle, it doesn't allow them to actually park at the vacation rental. So for, because for instance, my, me and my friends, we drive, so we all have separate cars. And so if we, if that, that we literally would not have enough parking, even though that's technically, we were fit into the code, only because of the vacation rental person had their car there. So I do think it's something that is, causes confusion and has to be addressed somehow, whether it's having their license plate on file of that car or something.
But I'm, I'm hearing you're thinking that there could be a way you could identify. So this would be one that we've got to bring back after you all can work on it and tell us that, hey, we figured out how we could allow this to happen.
But could I clarify, if they park on the street, they can, you can park as many cars you, no?
No.
So if it's associated with a vacation rental, even if it's on the street, it's a violation if it's too many cars?
Yeah.
Is my understanding of what it is.
Have to be parked in the driveway.
Correct. So the language in the, the ordinance states, one vehicle per bedroom at the vacation rental. So it doesn't state in the driveway, on the street in front of the, so it's attributable to the property, so that includes vehicles that are legally parked on the street in front of it. And so as a matter of practice, we, you know, if, when we get called to investigate or report a concern for vehicles exceeding the permitted limit, it's easy to attribute the vehicles that are physically parked on the property as belonging to those guests. That's, it's in the driveway.
But as a matter of matter, how do you do that? I'm curious how you enforce that. Well, it's not my car. I mean, how would you even know?
You know, again, the, there's a couple of different ways, right? So if a guest tells us, that's not my car, but it's parked on the property, why is it there?
Off property. I mean, I mean, I'm just, as an enforcement, it's probably very difficult for you.
Sure, we have the ability to run license plates and get vehicle information. So we are certified through the police department. We hold that accreditation to obtain that owner information. So, and we also know who the owner of the property is. So by running the license plate, we know who the registered owner is, we know who the owner on title for the property is. So if that matches up, we do have a way of verifying if the vehicle is, belongs to the owner. That's also a way that we can, if we're investigating passively on a property, determine whether or not it may be owner-occupied versus operating as a vacation rental if there's not a submitted contract.
Could I offer this? I mean, because this, this has always been a difficult one. So since we're rethinking it, can we, maybe, maybe you could come back with some ideas and with, from talking to others as well, that, to do it differently? Because this is difficult for you to enforce.
True.
It's, it's difficult for the people coming to visit, like, well, I don't know what the license plate number is, and I, you know, it's just difficult for the renter. And it's, it's obviously difficult for the vacation rental organizations that have to deal with this. So is there a way to deal this? Maybe it's overnight vehicles versus, you know, you don't have to worry about it till it's, they're there all night. That clearly would be larger violations of more people staying overnight. And I don't know why, we have an opportunity, maybe we'd be open to creative suggestions from, from, from you.
Okay, and, and you're okay with the two additional vehicles allowed during daytime?
Yes.
Can I just get clarification? So yes on bullet, of page 15, it's yes on bullet one, no on bullet two, TBD on bullet three?
Correct.
Did I catch that? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So on 162, the operational requirements, to provide a list of all the guest vehicles, we agree, it's very difficult for them. Oftentimes, they rent vehicles when they come into town, so they're, that's not, it's not really reliable for us to use that information always. So we agree with 162. 163, with regard to maintaining the contracts and the licenses, we agree that, you know, holding the license for four years is, is a very long time. We do want to look at and discuss with the city attorney what they believe the correct amount of time would be. So this would be to be determined.
Clarification, you're talking about holding the license or the contract?
So they're both in here together.
Okay, so I think we should, should separate those two, because it's important. The license is one thing.
Yes.
You know, that, that's probably not needed for beyond. But the contract itself is needed for audits, because you're not auditing them till years after the fact.
Correct. So we're not recommending to change that, that they maintain the actual contracts.
Okay, so what is the request then, for their, they don't have to keep their license for four years?
Yes. So it says, each contract shall be maintained for...
Well, the license information is on the contract. And so we have it in the contract.
We, no, they obtain a photocopy.
Yeah, you have to send a photo of your license of everyone else.
A copy of the license, and that's what they're talking about, not... A copy of the license, and that's what they're talking about, not maintaining.
Right, but is that, that becomes part of the contract?
The contract doesn't have their license number on it, the contract.
But it could.
Pardon?
But it could, I mean, that would solve both problems, they wouldn't have to keep the ID, their, their ID, because it, if, if you need to track them down, it's in the contract. I'm, I'm just saying that it could be a way to combine it.
Are you saying a copy of the license, or a license number?
Well, license number, their name and license number could be on the contract.
We could, we could amend it to that.
Yeah.
So, this could just be some further direction and refining, before we have a final recommendation on it.
And then they don't need to keep the copy, and, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, we would, uh, 163, it's, um, maybe.
Bring back some alternative ideas.
Getting some feedback from Vron, um, on the license number, and isn't that a, is that a simple thing for you to do, your team, to add it in, on the contract?
Well, the contracts are, we can easily revise the form, so we can add that field in there, for them to submit that.
All right, excellent.
And I presume if I could, just, I presume we could even allow them to do that digitally?
Yes.
If they had a backup, uh, for contracts, if they had a backup?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the next one, which is 178, for the operation of the trash, um, so, this is likely, this is one that, um, you know, it's one of the only violations that's correctable, so it, it's very infrequent that it happens, and when it does, we typically call the local contact, they remedy it, um, so, I mean, with regard to, um, Grace's comments, you know, we are in agreement, like, like, it's, we, it's something that could be, not count as a strike.
You, you agree?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, beautiful. 171?
We are, we are in agreement as well, it should match the city's, um, rules and regulations for the maintenance, and it shouldn't be separate for vacation rentals.
Okay.
Um, 174, um, the signature of the responsible party and all adult guest, um, we don't agree, we think they all should sign it, because when sites are given, the first offense there is, I didn't know, so if they make everyone review and sign, we think it's still necessary.
So, I just went and visited my cousin who's visiting, and she invited me over for dinner, luckily, who's a vacation rental in another city, so, I didn't sign it, no, it was in, it was in Palm Springs, but I, I didn't have to sign it.
You were a guest of the guests, you were not a.
Oh, so, it's not required for daytime guests?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification.
So, we, um, having the responsible party, and, and all adult guests sign, are we recommending that we want to continue with that practice? Consensus? Okay.
That's what, that's what, Veronica, that's what you recommend, continues what we do now.
Correct, yes, keep that practice.
Although, could I say, the all, all adult guests, that doesn't indicate who are staying overnight, though, maybe that could be clarified?
We can, we can add clarify in language.
Maybe like, registered guests, or, um, it, that process, though, it is just the form that then the permit holder has to get each adult guest to, to sign, but that's not like, there's a form where, I, sorry, let me back up, the, the contract right now, um, there's like, a range of professionalism in experiencing short-term rentals, and sometimes it comes off very sleek, and it doesn't feel weird to send your license to someone, and sometimes it doesn't, and so, um, you know, I, I once thought it was like, uh, the email was formatted so strangely, I thought I was getting scammed, and I didn't believe there were actually an owner, because there were so many questions and documentation that they were asking for, um, and we're highlighting, anyway, but, I guess my point being is, is there, these are all digital forms, or is there also like, an online application process where that's like a, you know, like a Survey Monkey type form, where people can enter their information and sign digitally that way? Is there anything that the city can do to make, to standardize kind of the signature process, the, collecting all this information from guests that would then be, make those contracts consistent for you, or?
We can absolutely review that, um, one thing we have is, this vacation rental staff is amazing, and they're really hardworking, so they're hearing, you know, I'm sure they're watching right now, and we can definitely look into that and bring back what we can do to streamline it and make it consistent.
Yeah, I mean, and, I'm not trying to revamp the whole thing, but if there's something that we can streamline it, and then it's consistent across all, and it's, the, the data that you get is cleaner, too, then that might be worth it.
Yeah, absolutely, we can look into that. The next one, which is 175, is the posting of the registration certificate, um, and we agree that, um, we don't agree, we think that it should still be posted, we actually get calls from properties asking if they don't see it, like, is this a real property? And we're like, well, what address, and we can look it up, so it, it is just, um, it's just, you know, it's just having it there, yes, and the rules, so it's good to have on site, we've had often, uh, times our code officers respond, they had no idea, did never receive the good neighbor brochure, so having it there on site is just helpful for the actual people who are staying there, um, as well.
Or even guests visiting, daytime guests, yeah. So, yours, you, um, you say no.
Correct, we don't, we don't agree in changing that. Um, the next one, which is 234, um, is actually contained within the zoning code, so that would require, um, a zoning code revision.
But this is the, this is the, uh, state house, then?
Correct, but we do agree, so we would make that input, that we agree with the change, but it would not be a municipal, it's not contained, it's in the municipal code, it's in the zoning code.
It would just come forward through the planning commission, as opposed to coming directly to the council?
Okay, so this, this piece is going to come back to us when we ask for the event piece to come back to us.
These are estate homes, not event, right?
Yeah, that's what I meant, the, the, um, no, no, I was thinking event homes.
Yeah, so this, these are the larger estate homes.
These are the larger estates, the zoning code issue.
Got it.
Um, so the next item, which is number 260, um, we actually do agree, um, with extending the amount of time, because that 10-day period for a lot of the, um, individuals who receive the sites and want to appeal, it's not enough time, presently, we do work with them, and we always allow them to, because a lot of them live out of state, some out of the country, so extending that to 30 days, we're in agreement with that, we have no issue with that one as well.
And what, what are the reference numbers, reference?
Pardon? Um, you know, those were inserted by, by Vron, so I don't know.
I went crazy going through the report, trying to find a reference number, okay, all right, so that got you to the last one, right?
260 recommendations.
The last one was, um, to allow, um, there was the, compile all the administrative regulations into the ordinance, um, those are listed in the other.
You already said that.
Yes, I'm agree with that. And then the administrative board discretion, um, we don't agree with, you know, our, like I said, our strict ordinance, our strict enforcement is what makes the ordinance work, so allowing them to change the penalties, we just think, um, would undermine how strict the ordinance is and why it's working.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to discuss the AAB recommendations, too?
Isn't that what we're doing?
These are Vron's.
These are Vron's, but now we're getting, we just finished Vron, and we, now we start the crossover.
She, but, I, I understood, we already, you are already going to incorporate their recommendations.
The majority of their recommendations, um, all can be implemented by just policy, greater outreach, um, we, um, already have a regulation with regard to notifying the realtors, so a lot of these are already done, and we went through them with the AAB, um, so we could implement them.
You said a majority, what is not from the appeals board?
The rental platforms and property management, um, company enhancements, however, that with the new legislation, we can easily implement.
They had also, the, that's the rental platforms, they had also recommended the agency responsibility for, and I think that might require a lot, a bit more.
That was more, we need more input for that.
Yeah, we need more, that needs more stakeholders, I would table that for right now, but still consider it when we do a larger, um, that, that one, Mr. Mayor, was when they, when the agencies now had to be financially responsible for fines.
Yeah.
Which, we haven't engaged them yet, so.
So, that's under review?
Correct, we need more input.
And is that going to come back when this comes back to us?
We can, we can bring that information forward.
When is this coming back?
Um, probably realistically, not in November, uh, December, the question is, does the council want us to seek community input on that issue, or do you want us just to bring it back?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, but I'm, I'm hearing consensus on agreeing, I mean, keeping, keeping the numbers where they are, and we can, we should be able to, can't we approve that today?
The, the cap is before you tonight, yes.
Yeah, so we approve that, and then we have, uh, all the parties work on the recommendations, talk to the neighborhood, bring them back, whenever we, they need to come back, it could be January or February, but we need to let the neighborhoods, you know, comment on, on these changes, too, so that will take some time. But implement, oh, we can't implement what Veronica just walked through, the items that they are okay with.
Not tonight, no.
So, that, and, and that's why I've been confused on this all along, why was it even included in the staff report?
These other discussion items?
Yeah.
Because we thought the council wanted to discuss and give direction on those issues that hadn't really been fleshed out before.
All right.
Without bringing an ordinance.
So, we're giving, we're giving instruction to come back at some point in time with these items that we've all talked about, and with a revised update into the policy with these administrative changes, but tonight, we're, um, we're agreeing to the 36 and 26 with no changes, and, um, and, and, and we are agreeing to pull out W, or rewrite W, not counting, not counting, um, um, an event as a, as a rental?
I, I think that would need to be brought back, but we certainly want to hear direction from the council.
What I would suggest, because everything that we've talked, the, the cap is the thing that we had first talked about in June, all of these other things, I think, that we just talked about, are, are, I would say, are not controversial, they, they are administrative, really, including the one with the platform, the, the ones that become more controversial are, or more, need more discussion, I shouldn't say controversial, just need more, uh, need more community input and stakeholder input and outreach, would be something like event home regulations, and like, the 30, 60-day permit, and how the caps count, and things like the, um, fines on agencies, like, that, that would, that'll take a while to do.
Yeah, that's all coming.
But these are all the ones we just discussed, could come back.
So, we're not, none of the, none of the, the, the ordinance isn't referenced in this piece, the cap piece, so our full ordinance, the details in that ordinance where, uh, uh, W paragraph is included, isn't referenced in this two pages that we're approving tonight.
The item W regarding event houses, no, that's not in tonight's ordinance.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we're, we're going to bring that back, or our direction is, bring, bring the paragraph W back when we address, uh, event houses, the event house ordinance.
Except the legacy ones that fall under this would not drop to, from 36 to 26, they would stay at 36.
Yeah.
If the council adopts the ordinance tonight, yes.
Because they already, they, the event houses are already being counted in the STR guidelines. All we're doing, we're going to come, we're going to bring back event houses down, and soon, and we're going to exclude them from, um, this count, counting the event day as a short-term rental day. But if they use it as a short-term rental, then you're, it's counted by your team.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, all right, is that clear as much for everybody?
As clear as much, and then we also have to address, because nonprofits, I think, are, may be handed a little bit differently, because they're not making money on it, is that right?
For the events?
Well, that's another.
Yeah, I believe that's already addressed in the event house ordinance, in five, some five, correct.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have more questions of staff, or do we have a, a motion to accept?
If, if I might, there's one more item on the cap issue that I'd like clarification from, so I'm hearing there's consensus that we want to maintain the kind of legacy and the post 22 distinction, uh, keep the post 22 at 26, only remove the impending reduction for the legacy, uh, the council will recall that, as part of the 22 ordinance, you removed the distinction between the third quarter, but only for these post 22, um, vacation rentals, so for the legacy ones, you still have, uh, 32 plus four, so the question is, do you want to get rid of that third quarter distinction, or do you want to keep it? You, you got rid of it for the post 22?
Yeah, no, we need to get rid of it.
So, it's just a flat 36?
Yeah, does everybody agree to get rid of it?
Well, just, just a clarification, I mean, that, that was specifically put in there for summertime, because there's less, I, I mean, I don't know if that's a, a neighborhood or a stakeholder discussion.
Do you have a comment, Veronica, on this?
Staff recommends just a flat 36, as opposed to having the four distinguished for summer, it just is easier to have the flat 36.
Yeah.
Do we think it encourages, what you're saying, councilman?
The numbers don't show it.
Does it encourage summer rentals, or does it mean?
Because, well, summer rentals are good for us, to encourage that.
I know, but do the numbers show that that was, the reality is, it made a difference?
I don't know that, you're saying no.
No, if you look at the numbers, um, and, and like I said, we, there's very few homes that rent over the 32, because those four are just, right now, in that one quarter, where if we opened it up, it could increase the number of rentals across the board.
It didn't bear truth, it, it didn't work. So, great, uh, the staff recommendation is, uh, we get rid of that piece.
It's just a flat 36, as opposed to the 32 plus four.
But then you're increase.
You're increase, you're increasing the number of rentals during season.
And the vacancy in the summer. Oh, maybe that's okay, I don't know. Do you have a comment?
What was the statistic on the number of the, 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 the summertimes that were being used?
No, yeah, I, I understand administratively that it would be easier to, to do, but, from, from.
Change from where we're at now.
Right, it's, it, it changes, it, it changes what the status quo is at the moment, um, and part of it, too, is then you're adding four more, um, contracts to probably the height of season, which I'm, which I'm, no, my, my friends at Vron would, would like, um, however, I think part of that was encouraging summer, summer rentals, but also saying, but also keeping the number of rentals during season to be a little bit lower.
I, I, I would suggest, even though it doesn't really bother me, that the idea is we're keeping the status quo right now, and a bigger, other changes that actually change where we're at today.
Right.
Require more community input and stakeholder input and outreach, and, and, and sharing the data, that, I mean, the data tonight you gave is fantastic, both of you, but we haven't really shared that with the community enough, so I think, if we're keeping the status quo, that's great, if we're making any other changes, as much as I know Vron would like it, and, you know, I don't necessarily against it, I think we do need the community output and, uh, community outreach.
And that's not to say that after community output, at some point down the road, we could change that.
Yes, yeah, and, and I should just, I mean, this is the whole idea, this ordinance is a living, breathing thing that we should keep looking at, because the market is changing, and, um, and we're discovering new things, and you're discovering new things, so, it doesn't mean that this is, you know, we don't want to do anything to like, really drastically hurt someone who had an expectation, but if we're loosening regulations, we need to see how the market's going.
I, I don't disagree with my colleagues, I do think, if we're going to look at things, let's, in the future, let's look at everything all at once, I think doing these piecemeal changes is very confusing to our permit holders, who are trying very hard to stay in compliance, and to know what the expectations is, and to budget for their year, um, what they're going to do with their business, right? And so, I, I think we need to kind of have a little bit of balance here, and also for the neighbors to know, what is the experience this year versus what's going to be next year, or, it, it, people like knowing what's going to happen on their block, and so, um, I just want to make sure that we're, um, kind of providing stability, like, I, I think we should respond to, if there's significant market trends, but stability is also, um, highly valuable.
So, I think the answer to your question, city attorney, is 32 plus four and 26.
Got it, thank you.
And, and Mayor, if I may ask the question, since this is an important issue, is council interested in a working group reconvening that, uh, to members of council to work with the vacation rental organization, and stakeholders, and 1PS, and staff, or this, these final things coming back?
For these things, or for the, I, I think if you do this, the working group.
Yeah, I have them to come back.
Will bring back other things as well. will bring back other things as well. And so it will become a much bigger issue because I have heard other things come up like radius distance, radius restrictions and things like that, which will require a working group. The ones that we have discussed so far today, I don't think require a working group, but those are more administrative. If we start to get things that, changing the 26 to 36 or changing the four summer ones to regular ones or the radius thing, that would require a working group. So I don't know, I don't know what to say. I didn't answer you.
Okay, fine.
32 plus four and 26, and that's all we're addressing tonight. So do we have a motion on the floor? Made by Councilmember Garner, seconded by Mayor Protem. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, so now I think, are we?
One second.
3B.
We'll read the ordinance.
Oh, you gotta read it?
Gotta read it.
I can't hear you very well tonight. But is your mic, are the mics not, something's not working right?
Hello, can you hear me?
You're a little low, okay, go ahead.
In ordinance of the City of Palm Springs amending section 52507B and 525030 of the city's vacation rental ordinance regarding the annual cap on the number of vacation rentals that can occur on residential property within the City of Palm Springs.
That's it? All right, good job. Okay, 3B, staff report, please.
Good evening, city council. My name is Ariel Bishop Williams, the Housing Services Administrator here, and today I will be discussing the Gene Autry Airport site and our winning RFP bid.
Is tonight the first night you get to use your new name at council?
At city council, yes.
Yeah, very good. I love it, congratulations.
Thank you. It's been changed on my email for maybe about a month, but yes, officially in front of city council. So starting with some project history, this property came into the city's possession in 2019 due to a legal settlement. In 2021, the city released its first RFP, which complied with the State's Surplus Land Act, and that RFP did not yield any results. In March of this year, the city released a new and improved RFP, though that was canceled due to a technical issue. But in mid-July, we re-released the RFP again, which there was a best and highest bidder who we will be discussing later. The new and improved RFP includes specific information for what the city is looking for and expectations for our developers. In addition to that, because this is a difficult site right across the street from the airport, the city has committed to rezoning the property and starting the entitlement process for the developer. I wanted to take the time to look broadly at the location, which is signified with the red dot. The location is walkable to many stores and restaurants and, as featured in the photo. Not featured in the photo is the other side of Ramone Road with even more shops and restaurants, including Walmart. So on to our winning proposal. West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation really impressed us. We will get into why in the coming slides, but I wanted to make sure that you got to see a few aerials of the project, which is known as Mission Juniper. Mission Juniper has a unique shoestring cluster design and is totally mid-century inspired, and there's even a green roof, which we think is really cool. The Mission Juniper project is designed with sustainability at its core, incorporating rooftop solar panels, passive design strategies like solar chimneys and cross ventilation, as well as drought-tolerant desert landscaping. More than 45% of the site is preserved as open space with shaded courtyards and walkways that reduce heat and promote outdoor gathering. These features not only lower long-term operating costs for residents, but they also align with the city's climate action and water conservation goals. The project will feature a 3,650 square foot community amenity building with a grand lobby, multipurpose room, as well as onsite resident service offices. Families and seniors will benefit from two playgrounds, landscaped courtyards, shaded walkways, as well as gathering spaces that foster community connection. Mission Juniper is unique with its intergenerational model, which intentionally blends family and senior housing into one community. Through West Hollywood's nationally recognized inter-gen resident services program, seniors and families will share spaces, programs, daily connections that reduce isolation and also foster, I'm sorry, I'm getting cold, I'm messing up my words here, foster mentorship and strength in community ties. Mission Juniper will deliver a total of 203 affordable homes. This project includes 156 family units with one, two, and three-bedroom layouts alongside 47 one-bedroom senior units and dedicated buildings. This thoughtful mix ensures housing options that meet the need of both growing families and older adults seeking stability. Every home is designed with comfort and functionality in mind. Units include in-unit laundry hookups, private patios or balconies, full kitchens, and energy-efficient appliances, as well as modern climate systems to keep the homes cool year-round. Family units feature larger layouts up to 1,000 square feet, while senior units incorporate universal design elements like wider doorways and reinforced grabbar areas to support aging in place. And for those who have seen Aloe Palm Canyon, you've seen the layouts and you know the quality that we are expecting from our developer. Okay, Mission Juniper will be reserved for households earning up to 60% of the area median income, ensuring long-term affordability for families and seniors that have been priced out of the Palm Springs market. In Riverside County for 2025, 60% AMI is about $67,000 for a family of four and just over $47,000 for a single-person household. By targeting this income band, the project will reach working families, seniors on fixed incomes, and other residents most at risk for displacement. Okay, so the project represents a total development cost of approximately $80 to $85 million, funded through a layered mix of state, county, federal, and private financing. The city's only contribution is the donation of our surplus land, which is in that teal looking circle there. There is no direct cash subsidy required, and in return, the city will receive $40,000 annually in ground lease payments totaling over $5 million during the initial 30-year term, ensuring a long-term fiscal benefit while delivering more than 200 affordable homes. In addition to the city's land contribution, the project is requesting support from Riverside County in the form of a $3 million soft loan and 51 project-based vouchers to ensure long-term operating stability and affordability for residents. So we are recommending that we award the exclusive negotiation agreement to West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation to provide for the sale of real property for this development of 203 affordable housing units and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute all necessary documents. I'm available for questions, and we also have a representative for the developer on Zoom.
Excellent, thank you. And this is the same developer that just opened Aloe Palm Canyon?
Correct, the same developer.
Did an incredible job there. Let's see. Is there any questions from council? All right.
I always have questions. So this is a land lease, it's not a sale, right?
So we are technically going to be giving them the land as part of the donation. On their books, it's going to look as though the government entity, us, are giving them, we're leasing it, but it's going to be their property. They're going to be the owners of it. A ground lease works better for their financing. Anoop, if you're still with us, feel free to jump in at any time on the intricacies of that, so developer representative.
We're not receiving leases?
We are $40,000 a year.
But we're putting it back in the project because you said we're giving the land, but yet we're getting a lease.
Yes.
Just explain.
Yeah, so it's being put as a ground lease, so we get, it's mostly called residual receipt. So we are getting some money back for putting land, which is worth money, into the project, but they're not paying us for the land. They're just giving us money back.
So, but they are leasing, they're actually giving revenue to us, which stays in the housing?
Well, it'll stay in the affordable housing dollars, but not in that project.
Got it, understood, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so thank you very much.
And there was some public comment about whether you needed airport approval and county approval. That's all okay?
Yeah, so that is part of some of the entitlement process. The project is, after we complete it here, it's going to start going through some of the processes with planning on the backend. I've been working with the planning department. We did the general plan amendment earlier this year and I'm currently working on rezoning. And so after rezoning is done and you guys pass that this project will be the project, we can then go to ALUC, the Airport Land Use Committee, and let them know that this project is going to be for affordable housing and we can request an exemption from some of their rules. But we had to get a couple of things in place before that.
And this is the property that we got the density increase by doing the boulders and crescendo as open space?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's good. Now, the seniors, so they have shared community spaces, but the living is separate?
Yes.
Okay, and are there senior services? I saw pediatric care and urgent care.
So, yeah, there will be senior services that similar, not exactly the same, but similar to Aloe Palm Canyon, they're going to have folks that are coming in, they're going to use of like the big community room, they're going to have different programs that allow families and seniors to come together, but it's not going to be as specific as our PSH at Aloe. But there will be folks coming onsite for our seniors.
Okay, and do we do, I see a partnership with DAP, do we partnership with the Mizal Center at all?
That would be up to the developer. I know that they are going to be partnering, or they are partnering with DAP at Aloe, so I think it's going to be a similar program.
Okay, might be a good thing. And also, like always, we can't restrict to Palm Springs residents, but we can market to them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as people see the first signs of that something's being built, phone calls will start coming, so, yeah.
Good, and we can mention it in community meetings and 1PS and everything? And you, there's public transportation here?
Yes.
Now, because you have this shopping, they're going to be walking along Gene Autry or is there another?
So Gene Autry and then also through Cathedral City, which is that next street over, they're able to walk that way. And part of this project, I don't know how clear it's going to be on some of these photos, I'm going to try to click back, but, well, you can kind of see it on this one, there's going to be more of like a park-like atmosphere on the street. Planning Department was, there was someone from the planning department to look over the RFP, they were one of the judges, and so we did discuss a more park-like atmosphere along the street, so it wouldn't just be straight hot sidewalk, but, you know, putting in trees.
Well, you can actually step into the road because that might be dangerous. That was great. Oops. And what would be the timing if this negotiation is successful?
So we're hoping to enter into the ENA, well, technically starting tonight, but realistically, paperwork and all of that will probably start in the next month or top of the year. But we are thinking, and Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're going to switch to permanent in 2028, so, right? Yeah, so, yeah, so completion would be somewhere in 2020, well, probably the end of 2028.
All right, great, thank you, thank you very much.
Well, they did Aloe Palm Canyon in two years, so.
Could I just offer, so this has not been to the County Land Use Commission yet because it's so close to the airport. I would recommend that that's one of the first thing before you start spending a lot of dollars because they do have the ability to stop it, and we've run into that in the past, so I would make sure you get there first and get their approval. And if they do say no, there are several remedies around it, but that's a process. So I would recommend we do that sooner than later.
Yeah, no, it's definitely one of the first things we want to do, but we have to officially get it rezoned, so it shows that the city does approve of the project and then get through this part that city council approves of the project, so we can take all of that and apply for the exemption on the basis of it being affordable housing.
You're waiting till it's rezoned, the land?
That's already in progress, yes.
Right, but you don't have to wait, you can go ahead and get it before them before that.
The information we've been given is that we should be waiting till then, but we can definitely look at that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Do we have a motion to accept staff recommendation?
Yes, and thank you, Ariel, so much. This is really awesome, and I'm really excited about working with West Hollywood Group again. I think this is amazing.
Yeah, they've been really awesome to work with so far, so definitely excited for another project.
Motion by Councilmember Bernstein, seconded by Councilmember Garner. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, next is, what do we want next? Parked vehicles, 3D. Okay, maybe we have a staff report on the regulation of vehicles parked for sale on city streets. Who gets to do that one?
I'm just getting my staff report. I apologize. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is a discussion item. The city council requested some options in terms of how to deal with vehicles that are parked on public streets, that are parked there for the purpose of selling the vehicles. And so there are a number of different options that the city might want to take. Some are a little bit more administratively burdensome than others, some are more legally suspect than others, and so I'll kind of walk you through those. So the first thing that I wanted to identify for you is ordinances that try to regulate based on the for-sale sign itself have been held invalid under First Amendment concept. So we want to avoid adopting any kind of ordinance that regulates based on the content of the signage. The city, I do believe, could regulate commercial activities within its rights-of-way. Cities historically have broad authority to regulate commercial activities that occur within their rights-of-way, and so as long as we do that primarily without reference to the for-sale sign, we can do that. And so that would be one option in terms of just adopting an ordinance that prohibits commercial sales within the city streets, and the city currently has an ordinance prohibiting other activities such as washing vehicles in the streets. Another option would be parking regulations such as time limitations. So the city's municipal code authorizes the city engineer to identify areas on the streets through curb markings or signage where parking is prohibited either entirely or during certain hours of the day or night. And so the city council could give direction in these troubled areas where we see a lot of vehicles parked for sale to focus on those and put time limitations on the parking. That would probably be less administratively burdensome because that would simply involve issuing parking citations and putting up some signage or curb markings. Cities are also allowed to adopt parking permit programs, and these allow for parking on the street, but only if you are a local resident, local to that particular neighborhood. It involves a permit system, and so as the name might suggest, it's a little bit more administratively burdensome in terms of staffing that and administering that permit program. Another concept that's been suggested is regulation based on the location of the registered owner of the vehicle. This would be an ordinance that would basically say that you can't sell a car on a public right-of-way unless you're a certain, unless you're within a certain distance of the registered address of that particular vehicle. It's kind of a variation of prohibiting commercial sales in rights-of-way, but it's a more narrow, limited regulation or prohibition. We haven't really been able to identify this being done in any other jurisdictions, but if the council, and so therefore, there is always some potential for legal risk or legal challenge, but if the council's interested in us exploring that option, we certainly can. In terms of enforcement, I would imagine it would be a little bit more cumbersome than just a straight-out prohibition on commercial activities within rights-of-way. So those are some of the different alternatives or options that we've identified for city councils, so we certainly welcome your thoughts and consideration in terms of what you might wish to pursue.
Okay, council questions? Mayor Protem? Mayor Protem.
So, we received several public comments on this, and can you just clarify, public street that's not marked downtown, what is the standard of how long they're allowed to park there?
I think unless there's some sort of prohibition, they can park as long as they want, I mean, as long as they're not abandoned.
Seven, yeah. Chief, can you?
It's 72 hours, right?
Yeah, correct. Unless they move it, it's 72-hour limit.
Okay, yeah, right. And so, if there were to be parking regulations on time limitations, would this be something that could be based off of problem hotspots area to reduce that? Would this be something that you would, we would have to consider citywide? Like, when you're talking about time limitations, is there any approach on how we can really concentrate on areas that are more problemsome?
They don't have to be citywide, they can be in certain areas, certain neighborhoods, certain intersections, yeah, the city has pretty broad discretion about that.
Okay. And then, when you say "commercial sales," is that like someone who has like a business, a car dealership, who's bringing their cars, or is that anyone, is that like the act of talking about your car that you're selling with a prospective buyer? Like, can you clarify what you're saying when you say, like, "commercial sale activity"?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be like a commercial new or used car dealer, it could be an individual.
Just the act of selling?
Correct.
Okay. So, how do we, so is parking your car there with a for-sale sign an activity?
We would identify it as prohibiting the activity, we would use that as some evidence, but it wouldn't be, that wouldn't be an element of the violation.
Okay, so, most of the comments that came in were on the frontage roads of Ramon and Sunrise, where sometimes it's as low as five or six cars, sometimes it's as much as a dozen cars parked there for many days in a row. The residents there have flagged this as an issue for years, and it is quite dangerous. It is an area where you have the morning walkers walking on that frontage road, people driving around the corner, and don't know that someone has stopped in the road to look at these for-sale cars. It's a combination of amazing consistent, but sometimes very slow walkers, and really inconsistent driving on these frontage roads. And so, sometimes you have students, there's a lot of high school students who also walked to Palm Springs High School along that way, it is a combination of residents. And so, you know, I'm really interested in particular, the prohibition of commercial sales and/or the time limitations. My concern around the time limitations, if we did narrow it to a problem hotspot, and I've gotten lots of other parking concerns too, that might be interested in identifying themselves as this is an area where people are parked for a long time. You know, we got comments, I've gotten previous comments on Baristo Road, where people are parking for the airport, right? So, it's not a for-sale sign issue, but they're parked there for sometimes a week, right? And so, do you have any thoughts around the time limitations on how a neighborhood could flag? We would be open or interested, like, what would that process, what could it look like if they did want to have some type of time restriction, which would impact them too, right?
I mean, I guess it might depend on what we're seeing out there in term, in practice. If cars are parking there overnight, then it might be easier on the local residents to adopt, to impose parking limitations that prohibit overnight parking, because that won't maybe impact the residents as much. Otherwise, you know, several hours, prohibiting parking for more than eight hours, that might, that might do the trick. I don't know if our traffic engineer or police chief have other thoughts?
From an operational perspective, the clearer it is and the more easy to recognize those cars is gonna be very important. Cars do park on Baristo, for instance, a lot of them are the Turo cars, they might be there for a day, day and a half. And the last time this came up, we actually looked, we didn't have that many complaints, and we checked on that location, and there weren't cars there for a substantial period of time. What would take for us to do is to mark those cars, provide evidence that they weren't moved in a certain period of time, a substantial distance according to the courts, which means that we normally mark the tires on the pavement, that's where you see the blue or the orange paint on the, on the ground. So, that becomes kind of a work pill, certainly can be done, but it means going back multiple times to check on that vehicle. I would prefer if there's a, if the regulation's in place, for instance, at the corner of Ramon and Sunrise, that no vehicles are parked there at a certain time for the purpose of selling that vehicle. I think that if we can control those few hotspots rather than doing a citywide cast on a regulation that might be more difficult for, to enforce and be less consistent in our enforcement of those vehicles. So, for instance, the one option, the two options I heard, you know, the city attorney talk about, you know, no street, for instance, in the city, you could sell your vehicle. And then, the other is that if it was registered within a tenth of a mile of the, of the address of that vehicle, that would give us the opportunity, if that's even possible, where that's gonna be evaluated by BPK. But if we go and run a license plate, there's a complaint that there's a car being sold there, we run that license plate, and that license plate is registered to a dealership on the other side of town, or it's registered to a person some other place, it shouldn't be parked at that location for that purpose. And then, it can be, we can take enforcement action, it's pretty easy to do, you run the license plate and get the address, and then ticket the car.
And Mayor Protem, so just to piggyback on the chief's comments, you could, we were just talking about, you could do a complete ban on that one particular corner I know you're talking about that's problematic, and I think legally we could do that, but that means the residents can't park there either.
Right, they're not asking for no parking at all, that's not what the residents are saying. There's, they're asking for dealing with the for-sale cars that are parked beyond the 72 hours, and it's on the residents to report it. So, none of the comments that we got on this item was saying, "We don't want parking here." And that parking is used, I can tell you for opera at the park, people park there very early to claim their spots. So, it is important in these other key events that the whole community uses that parking. So, I'm not proposing that's a no parking, but it is right now not a system where, right now, the burden is on the residents to report it.
But did I understand, Mr. Ballinger, that if it could be regulated, that no vehicles can be sold on any street in the city?
That would be one option, yes, just to flat-out prohibit all vehicle sales within all city streets, yes.
But you're saying vehicle sales? Are we saying commercial sales?
Commercial sales of vehicles.
Oh, we're actually gonna say?
Yeah, and, I mean, commercial just means a business transaction, right? So, we can say vehicle sales if adding that word causes ambiguity.
If we can say no commercial sales or no vehicle sales, I think we'd have a lot of happy residents on that intersection. I just want to make sure that it is very clear that we're not going to have an issue with some of these cases that you identified, that specifically about for-sale signs.
Mayor? Jeff, a follow-up. So, what I'm reading here, though, it says, you know, a content-neutral ordinance prohibiting commercial activities, comma, including vehicle sales. So, our, is our, if we wrote an ordinance, would that ordinance specifically say vehicle sales?
It might be safer to specify vehicle sales, because as the council's aware, the state has adopted other regulations for other portions of the rights-of-way, like sidewalk vending.
Yeah.
And so, we wouldn't be proposing to regulate those types of activities, it's really more targeted at vehicle sales, I think, at this point.
And we could do that legally, we could say no vehicle sales.
Yes.
Wasn't that the solution?
Yeah, I thought we couldn't, so.
If we do that, then, but, so, I think this gets really tricky, because there's people who are trying to sell their car, and they put a sign in their car, and they drive around with their car everywhere, saying that it's for sale, and they're parked in front of their house, but they just are letting people know that they're selling their car. I mean, what happens to those people, right, if you're parked at their house? I mean, that's where it gets, because I don't think anyone's also trying to stop, like, your average person parking in front of their house and just letting people know that they're selling their car. And so, when we do these like very broad ones, then all of a sudden, like, nobody gets to do that, and it's a pretty common way for people to sell their vehicles, but I understand the issue that we're trying to address, but this is where it gets tricky.
Yeah, and just for some context, you can sometimes see like multiple vehicles all to the same phone number.
Right.
So, that's how you know it's someone who's selling multiple vehicles.
Yeah, so, I guess my question would just be, can we address, address something like that so that we're not, I mean, I think of my dad. My dad would be furious if someone told him he couldn't park his car with a for-sale sign in front of his own house, right?
We'll see if there's a way we can narrow it, so it doesn't apply to those circumstances.
But so, you already can't, you can't wash, wax, wiping, greasing, or repairing a vehicle? So, we're already saying you can't do that stuff on a city street?
Can't wash your vehicle?
Yeah.
Mayor?
I don't, yeah, so, I don't know how, if we're saying already you can't wash, wax, wipe, so, are we, how do we really even enforce that? Yeah, okay, Councilmember Beretti.
For all the reasons you just talked about, this is a bit of a tricky, it can have unintended consequences. There's a softer approach that's been used in the past, because it's focused on what's the goal. It's not your dad selling his car in front of his house, it's the areas that they concentrate, there's four or five, like, across from Mizal, exactly what we're talking about. So, since we have our 72-hour rule, what we've done is, and this is code enforcement or traffic enforcement, not to bother the police so much with it, is if it's, if there's a group of them parked, it's a hotspot, we're okay to make the presumption that while they're parking their car there to sell it, we can make the presumption that it's there, gonna be there for over 72 hours. So, what we do is we go and we take a sticker, and we put it right over the for-sale sign that says, "Notice, there's a 72-hour limit," and all the information we have in there, and noticing you that you have to move this within 72 hours. It's a nuisance to the person selling their car. They come and they take it off eventually, and then we go back and we put it on, and then eventually that ends, you know, it's almost like focused traffic enforcement, it's focused code enforcement on a hotspot. Now, it's not a sticker, a decal that, you know, they can never get off, but it sticks there and they have to take it off. It's just a softer approach. It's, the ordinance changes are all fine, but I just offer that as a different solution.
I hear you. The residents would say that they have flagged this as a traffic focus every few years for years, and it hasn't worked, and people just kind of wait it out, and then they start parking there again. So, if we can figure out some way to cover that nuance of people, you know, kind of parking their own, if it is the, kind of, the tenth of the mile is the chief mens, or, yeah, tenth of a mile of the registered location of that license plate, you know, if that's not too burdensome, that might be a way to kind of go around it. But I, people have been waiting for this for a really long time.
How do we know they're paying sales tax to us? So, is there, is there another way that we could approach it? You know, because they're, they're not paying sales tax, so we're losing all that money. So, is there another way that we could approach this that... We require permits for everything else in this damn city. Why can't we require a permit if they're, they've got their car for sale?
We could do it like a garage sale permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, for garage sale.
And you can only get one for a period of time.
I have heard of that regulatory approach proposed, yes.
But then, you're gonna have all these people who, like Grace's father.
Then you have to worry about the people who do get the permits and administering it.
Well, then, would you be, could you limit the permit? You can only get one.
Probably limit them in terms of number or location, yeah, spread them out so you don't have concentration.
Number of sales?
You can only get one permit per time, like, you can only have one garage sale permit at a time, presumably.
But these are mostly just one-car peoples, I mean, they just cluster there because they're on the high.
No, it seems like there's, there's actually people bringing cars.
It's a business.
It's a business.
You'll see the same people come a month later, bring a different car.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, there are two corridors.
There are two corridors, it's a long light, there's a frontage road, it's like all incentive to market your vehicle there, right? Where you don't see it is the frontage road, let's say, on Palm Canyon on 111, where there isn't like a stoplight, right? So, it's a matter of being stopped at that frontage road, that really incentivizes people to.
If it's just these two roads, can we put like a time limit parking on there?
That's what I was...
Yeah, and just put like a three-hour parking?
Well, that's burdensome on the residents, because also residents use that, and that's used for...
So, maybe Councilmember Ready's stickers wouldn't say 72 hours, they would say something about registering for a business license, or a garage sale license, or whatever it is we're saying.
Or a permit. And permits, are you gonna charge them for, but then, everybody who sells their car is gonna require a permit?
And if they sell more than one at a time, like, is it gonna be a substantial fee where then they're not gonna want to sell their car in that? Like, there has to be some type of real penalty for not doing it, if it's like a $25 fee, a $50 fee, and they're selling a $10,000 truck, which there are two to three right now on the block, just trucks. Do they have to be proportion, like, I just don't understand how the...
No, you can make it subject to administrative fine, $1,000, yeah.
But that wasn't one of the recommendations.
That's a, that's a variation of the recommendation, yeah.
All right, so we can keep going around on this one, what are thoughts?
I would prohibit commercial sales, and I would ask the city attorney to look into the permitting, permanent vehicle sales, and look into the permitting option with at least a $1,000 penalty for anyone selling a vehicle without a permit.
But we can't, we can't prohibit commercial sales, because then we're, we have street vendors.
Commercial sales of vehicles.
So, we have to say vehicle.
Right, yeah, vehicle sales.
Food trucks.
Well, nobody's selling their food truck. If they have a permit and they want to run their food truck, that's fine, don't sell it.
Okay, so, city council's gonna, or council, city attorney's gonna bring back an idea?
I had one other, there is a, and this is supplemental, and it's kind of more Public Works, but parking too close to the intersection, that's not allowed, right? Like, isn't there like an amount of feet that they're not allowed to park at that intersection? Can we... Can we paint the red, and that's an automatic ticket? People park right up against, to the corner. Yeah, there's a crosswalk that goes up to the light. Is that...
Supposed to be a limit by, supposed to be a certain feet away from the intersection, right?
There is, and...
Yeah, there certainly are red curb rules that we use all over the city, and we could talk to the city engineer about some strategic locations where maybe that needs to be reviewed and taken a look at.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they'll often cover, like, the cutouts even, kind of handicap, yep. Okay.
But is this a particular area?
That corner, the Ramon and Sunrise corner, is that one spot for a red corner. But if there's another spot that the engineer recommends also could use it, then we should do that, too.
Okay, so can we repeat what we're asking the city attorney to do?
It's essentially option number two in the staff report. Prohibiting commercial sales and rights of ways.
Vehicle sales.
Vehicle sales. Permitting commercial vehicle sales in the right of way, and for the city attorney to look into a permitting program with at least a $1,000 fine if they don't. Do you think we need both, I guess, is my question?
It would really be probably one or the other. It's either prohibition or it's a regulation, so I...
Then I would do the permitting the commercial vehicle sales.
Okay.
The first.
The prohibition.
And then how do we enforce it?
And is that everywhere, or just on certain streets?
We would look at the option of narrowing it for when you're just parking in front of your own property, just for parking purposes, so that's what we'd bring back. In terms of enforcement, it'd be an ordinance, and so the city could enforce it either through administrative citations with fines, or if, if need be, you could cite them into court.
So it would be kind of a combination of option two and option five, right?
But are we gonna, are we opening the door to get in trouble if we're not? Are we really enforcing waxing, wiping, greasing, washing? But we're gonna enforce a vehicle sale?
I, I don't see that as being a, a big legal problem, no. If, if we, if the council wants to direct us to do something on that ordinance, you can, in terms of either removing it or enforcing it more aggressively, but most of our code enforcement is responsive, and, and so...
Okay, so we are supportive of coming back with a, just the ordinance change to no commercial vehicle sales. Period, with no permit.
No permit, but Jeff is going to look into the parking at your own, in front of your own house.
I guess in the grand scheme of things, people aren't going to be complaining if someone goes to their friend's house and they have a for-sale sign in their car, and they're there for three hours and they leave, right? It's really, the issue is people who are parked there for days at a time, so it might be a non-issue as well, these, someone who's just trying to get rid of their car, who's just driving around.
Well, where I could see it possibly is your neighbor, right?
Right.
So if you're parking in your, the street...
Yeah.
Instead of your driveway, and then your neighbors get annoyed.
Right.
So I think it's worth exploring that part. Okay.
Okay, good luck with that one. Thank you. Okay, I think we got through everything, didn't we? We got through them all? All right. Okay, so next up is, we've got public comment on non-agenda items. Time's been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest. You have two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. First up is Sunshine Heretta, followed by James Hayton, and Javier already talked, and Eileen Lynch, so we have three. Oh, there's an extra one. So is Sunshine not here? Okay, James Hayton, not here. Eileen Lynch, she's gone, and Ishak Abraham.
I love Palm Springs, and I believe our elected leaders should embody the values of this city. Transparency, responsibility, and respect for all residents. For more than a year, I have raised concerns, both in public meetings and in writing, about a council resolution that remains in place. I asked council members directly whether they would reaffirm their support for that resolution. The answers, or the silence, were revealing. Two council members did not respond. Others suggested moving the discussions off the public record, yet the resolution still stands. Those facts matters to voters. Because of that, I am announcing my intention to begin the recall process provided under California law. This effort will be carried out openly and full accordance with the guidance of the city clerk and the register of voters. I invite the public to visit recallthemall.vote for more information. Accountability is not personal, it is a civic standard, and I intend to follow every lawful step to ensure that standard is upheld.
All right, thank you. Any further public comment?
Yeah, we have one, Jeffrey Flecker.
Come on down.
Thank you, um, I'll try to be brief. It, it's regarding, this is my first council meeting, I wasn't sure how things worked, so I should have spoke at the beginning, but this is regarding what was just discussed, the parking regulations. I bought my home at the corner, literally, of Sunrise and Ramon, 13 years ago, and this parking problem was an established problem at that point. Of course, I didn't discover that till I moved in, but, um, some of the things discussed here, we've tried. With all due respect, the stickers doesn't work. The law enforcement and traffic enforcement people put little tags on them that say 72 hours. Routinely, we find them on the sidewalks, and they move the car down two car lengths. And there's a couple, about two, maybe three guys that are brokers under the table, I'm assuming, and they have four or five phone numbers. My father tracked them one winter, and we saw the same phone numbers coming up over and over again. It was about, it was pre-COVID, so, but the point being, he comes every day, and he looks for stickers, and he rolls the cars forward, and he knows the laws about 72 hours, and he plays the game. Meanwhile, I have three cars, and I have two, I have a garage and a carport, so I've always got a car on the street. So if you limit it time-wise and say eight-hour restriction, well, I'm screwed, because my cars are all registered for that address, so what am I supposed to do, right? The danger is real, not only for me, you know, I come around the corner, I follow the speed limit, but right now, there's the big van from Nature's Kitchen or whatever across the street parked there. Commercial vehicles, they don't care about that, the law either, and they park there all the time as an advertisement. But you come around that corner, because of that van, you can't see that there's another car double-parked middle of the road, because they think it's a parking space, right? And when you've got six or eight cars, they all feed on that. So other people are like, hey, that's a great place to sell my car. So, um, the one recommendation that I made was the distance from registered address. I'm worried about the commercial sales not only impacting legitimate car dealers, you know, in racket club trying to sell their car, but the ice cream man, the taco truck, all those people.
All right, we, um, it time, expired our time. I'm sorry you had to stay for five and a half hours plus.
Your first meeting.
For your first meeting.
Well, you know what, it's a human face, you gotta know, this problem is, it's 20 years old.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be fixed.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for hanging in there. Okay, next item is city council, city manager request for upcoming agenda items.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I think when this, yeah, here is the schedule. We have one meeting in November, given the Thanksgiving holiday. You'll see that we have our legislative platform update by Townsend, that's kind of to be timed with the upcoming state legislative agenda, and to get some reiteration from you on our priorities, so they will be doing a very short presentation then. You'll see we've got a, it looks like about five different public hearings, two of them should be relatively short historic designations. We do have the appeal coming forward for the Nexus Hotel development that needs to come back to council. The, uh, we will be bringing forward a tribal conformity report on their Inspired Sunrise project, and then every year, we have to report out on AB 562, which is a listing of any significant economic development subsidies that we make each year. I know we've gotten a number of requests about the status of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and our development director assures me it will be on the agenda for November, so we will be bringing that forward, and as well as the cannabis ordinance update that council has asked us about. And then December 10th, we have our various council reorganization activities. The economic development director is also working on our hotel incentive program update, and I know you've mentioned the first-time homebuyer program, trying to bring back, that back for November. I think that's unrealistic, we're not gonna make it, the agenda is already pretty long as it is. More than likely, it's gonna be pushed back till December, maybe even January, so I wanted to make that point. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council? Yes, Councilmember Garner.
Thank you. I just wanted to provide an update about the Sunline meetings. I was at the Sunline meeting today, and one of the things that I raised was the possibility of working with Sunline to do more pedestrian safety work, pedestrian safety, because we did have, we have had fatalities and just accident, pedestrian accidents in the city. This has been an ongoing issue, and it's, it's not necessarily unique to Palm Springs, this happens across the Coachella Valley. Originally, I was just going to ask about working with Sunline for Palm Springs, but there's, our, our bus shelters advertising is really underutilized, and Sunline just dis, we just discussed this a couple months back. Anyway, I proposed it, and there was a lot of support. There was also mention of something called Vision Zero, which Palm Desert said they've been working on, which is about reducing pedestrian accidents and getting to a point of becoming a city where there are zero pedestrian accidents. I looked at the website and it seems pretty interesting, so just wanted to flag it for council. I don't really have an ask at this moment, but it does, it is something that I've shared with the police chief and the city manager, and I want to look into, but I think that there's some good opportunity here to probably collaborate on a regional level and, and try to reduce pedestrian accidents across the valley.
Also, just add, that's part of in the Blue Zone blueprint around pedestrian safety, and, yeah, that's accept, so definitely in line with them, too.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Uh, yeah, a couple things. One other question, we passed our budget this year, we asked there'd be quarterly updates. My understanding is that would be on an agenda item, but I'm not sure what, what council thinks, but I thought in June that we were gonna have one, so the first quarter, July, August, September, that we would have something before the end of the year. Will that be coming back?
Yes, councilmember, I know the finance director is working on that, and, um, I will speak to him about, uh, agendizing that before the end of the year, maybe for the December meeting, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, to me, I mean, I just think we want to keep on top of, we want to know where we're at before, I mean, we had, we had extensive discussions during the budget that we would have these regular updates, so, um...
We're on long quarters.
Yes. Um, I also, because in our meeting with the animal shelter, they're gonna be inviting council at some point to go visit the new wildlife center in India, which actually serves the whole Coachella Valley. A, a number of other cities are supporting it, and I think they at least just want ours, us to see it. Obviously, wildlife doesn't know the same boundaries as other animals, and, so, but it's an impressive facility. And I just want to mention, I, along with Mayor Potem and, and Councilmember Beretti, we attended the League of California Cities in Long Beach earlier this month, uh, as part of all the California Cities meeting, with a lot of different educational forums and, and panels and discussions. Also, um, the, is the event homes, are we, are we definitely coming back with that, or do we need to agree again? We already agreed that that would come back as an agenda item? Okay. And then the other thing I mentioned is the, the flag raising on Arenas will be on Friday, I think it starts at 5:00 PM, for the LGBT flag on Arenas. Thank you.
Does everybody do their one, two, three, four report? You did it for everybody?
It's a communal.
Unless somebody left us out.
Yeah, that's great.
It's a one, two, three. AB one, two, three, four report.
Oh, right, right, okay, thank you.
Okay, very good, additions.
Okay, I, I just, a question to the city manager, so, uh, now that the appeal on Nexus Hotel is on the meeting of November 12th, that, that's a very lengthy meeting, I don't know if something there could move to December, but I, I agree with Councilmember Bernstein that, that the budget update would probably have to be in December, is a good thing to do. I, I don't know if some of those things can wait till first of the year, or they could move to December.
You know, uh, council, council member, um, yeah, I've already moved a couple items off the November calendar. One was a consent item, but the other was the hotel incentive program update. I could continue to, let's see, I'm trying to look at some of these, some of these public hearings, I think, are, are fairly required.
Right, those have to go, yes.
And the Economic Development Strategic Plan, I know I've had a number of requests to get that on the agenda. The cannabis ordinance update, I honestly don't know how urgent that is.
Along with him.
Him, him.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, December is fine.
I don't, I don't think another 30 days is gonna, is gonna make a difference.
So potentially try to move that off until December is possible.
January?
January.
Well, December. I, I mean, because when you look at December, I mean, just the, we're like, it's like a wasted meeting if it's just to point, you know, the new mayor and...
Well, and I have...
Meeting schedule, there's not much.
Yeah, I have a feeling, even though there, even though December doesn't look that much right now, I have a feeling a bunch of end-of-the-year stuff that we're trying to get on, so, you know, maybe if we can live with moving the cannabis ordinance to maybe the first meeting in January, might be helpful.
For the mayor.
If we're gonna pile it on to December, let's pile it on in December.
Yeah, complying with state law, just updating it to state law.
Okay. What we'll try to do is move that to December.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
We're all good? Okay, our meeting is adjourned until, um, the next regular city council meeting on Wednesday, November 12, 2025, at 5:30 PM. Meeting is adjourned.